Good evening, everyone. My name's Gavin Kern, I'm the Assistant City Manager here at the city of Laguna Beach. I have with me Charlie Williams with LPA, who will be doing obviously the real legwork here on the presentation itself. But tonight is the Facilities Master Plan. And so the Facilities Master Plan, just to kind of give you a little brief overview, there's really four phases to it. We're on Phase Three, but the first phase was really to look at 26 city facilities, kind of look at the maintenance and the needs of those facilities and put together a facilities assessment program for that. And we actually did a presentation to the City Council back in October on those plans. The second phase is really to look at the needs of each facility. And so that was about outreach both from our controls and Scriffen and LPA to take a look at, you know, ask departments what they need. And more importantly, ask residents and things what they need or what they would like to see in some of the services of the facilities. So now we're here on Phase Three, which is really kind of an overview of the concepts. And then Phase Four will come back with kind of an overall financing plan. Obviously, you'll see a lot tonight. Some things cost, you know, at one price, some may be obviously much more expensive. So we'll look at more of a long-term costing of how you can afford some of these things that we'll be presenting tonight. And when you look at these facilities, it's always not something you do tomorrow. It's a five, 10, 20, 30-year outlook on some of these facilities we're looking at. So those are the four phases. So tonight, we kind of broke it out into three kind of work workshops a little bit. Because you'll see through, there's a lot of material to get through, so we didn't want to just kind of overwhelm everybody, so we split it up. The first hour, and how the hours are broken up is presentation from Charlie, 20 to 30 minutes, kind of going over the first section. And then we'll do Q and A, or actually some just listening and learning from everyone here, what they think of the concepts. And get comments back from you, we can bring back to the council. And we're going back hopefully to the council in June, but want to hear comments from you on those. But we broke them up in three categories. The first is public safety and civic service. So this first hour, you'll be hearing about the Village Entrance, City Hall, Police Headquarters, Fire Stations 1, 2, and 3, Marine Safety Headquarters, Corporate Yard, Animal Shelter. The next hour will be Community Services and Recreation, so you'll hear about the Suzie Q. And here's, I have page two lost here, my second page of this. But the Suzie Q has other facilities. And then I think the last, if I had my second page, and Lang Park is the part of number two. The Recreation Facilities, I apologize, my page two is missing, so I can't list what the other pages were. I'm sorry, Laguna Beach Community Center and Lang Park. And finally, the third hour is Arts, Culture, and Library Services, so that'll be that 7 to 8 o'clock hour. Laguna Beach Library Festival of the Arts, the Playhouse, and the Forum Theater. And so with that, I will turn it over to Charlie, who will take it from here. So yes, so good question, I should have answered that, just some housekeeping. Obviously, I hope everyone knows the restrooms are out the door down the hall. But this is being recorded, so it's not live tonight, but is being recorded on Zoom. So this whole presentation and the video you see tonight in Charlie's presentation will be on our YouTube. And we'll make sure we have a link on our Facilities Master Page, Facilities Master Plan page on our city website. And all this material you'll see tonight will also be available. So if you want to take notes, you can, but you'll see the video on YouTube and you can fast forward to the important parts you want to hear about again. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charlie.
Thank you, Gavin. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. This is a lot of hard work from Griffin Structures, who's represented by Dustin and Kristin in the back. We were hired by Griffin, who was hired by the city, as the architects to study the different facilities. As Gavin mentioned, there's 26 of them throughout the evening. If you want to get a sense and overview of which facilities are on the table, we have maps in the background there for you. So those will be available through the evening. And up on the screen here, what you see is a diagram of all the different facilities we're being considered. And what started this process was the Facilities Condition Assessment that Griffin conducted. In that Facilities Condition Assessment, what we had taken a look at was what is the existing state of each of the buildings that are on one of these pieces of property? So we're looking at them from their operational perspective, how are the mechanical systems in them? How are the buildings themselves? Are they being used appropriately for what they were intended from the beginning? Or are they overutilized perhaps? In addition to that, we then took a look at what would the cost be to continue to maintain those buildings or make the repairs that were needed to continue them to function? And then we've put together the diagram that you see here. The items in red were the ones that stood out to us as we were going through the studies as the ones most critical. Criticality could have come down to something about, something like the fire station that's not up to seismic requirements that it needs to meet to other things, this would just be a lot to maintain, or it's in a state of disrepair, or there's a significant operational cost with it. On the other end of that spectrum are the things that you see in green. These are some of our newer facilities, some of the facilities that have been upkept in a better way than some of the others. So they're a little less critical in terms of needing immediate attention. And the ones in yellow, those are the ones that sit in the middle of those two. So these are suggestions of where to perhaps focus throughout tonight. As you learn more about these facilities, you will have an opportunity to give us feedback. And that's all we're here to do tonight is listen to what your thoughts are after some of these initial ideas. They're big, broad concepts, we're calling them site utilization studies. Because the ask of our team was to say, does the city have enough facilities? Is these 26 facilities that we have, are they big enough to accommodate what the residents, you have all asked for? And is it, can it accommodate what the city staff needs, what they need to operate and run the city? And so through that, after doing the Facilities Condition Assessment Study, Griffin went through and started to assign where the priorities might lie and where we might want to direct the money, how you might start to begin to approach these different facilities. And then from there, we've started to now dive into looking at each facility and making recommendations on how to treat those. So there's a lot to go through tonight. We're going to start, as we said, with the Public Safety and Civic Facilities. So you see, we've got the City Hall, the Public Works, the Village Entrance, the Corporate Yard, Fire Station, the Lost Pier, and Marine Safety, along with the Fire Station 2 and 3 on Top of the World and near Aggett. All right, so let's just set the stage here. We'll call this the Village Entrance. We're all familiar with this. We have the City Hall, the most prominent element there. We have the parking elements that surround the lift station and the digester there. The first thing that we were asked is, keep in mind, the city has visions for, and there's been conversations about potentially a parking structure there. We're not responsible for designing that at the moment, but we were asked to, what does that look like? If some of the design ideas that were out there today put on this site, where could there be opportunities for additional buildings? So what you see here in the green and the blue, that's the existing City Hall and the Fire Station. Adjacent to that in red is a proposed location for a new Fire Station. We've heard a lot from the Fire Department that they need to relocate from their current facility for two major reasons. Number one, just seismically not sound and doesn't meet the seismic requirements that essential facilities like a Fire Station require. And they need to move away from the intersection that they're at now to provide better response times through the canyon. Surprisingly enough, just this little slide down does increase this, and we're talking seconds, which was interesting to me that I learned. Improving the response by seconds is a critical aspect for the fire. And then where might there be opportunities for additional buildings in the Village Entrance? And we say a building, there's lots of things this could become. We've heard conversations around a museum, we've heard conversations about Visitor Center, we've heard conversations about a Civic Arts Center. So this first blush that you see of the Village Entrance idea is, what would a building, an additional building on top of the Fire Station start to look like in this area? So in this one here, you've got the proposed building in orange, the Fire Station in red, adjacent to the City Hall. This one brings about, this new building in orange brings about 6,300 square feet of additional space and leaves us with 77 parking stalls. And then it introduces the new Fire Station in red at about 11,000 square feet. Another option would be shifting that towards the intersection of Forest and Laguna Canyon Road a little bit further. This is the one that retains the most amount of parking at 92 spaces, 6,300 square foot building, and allows us to retain some of those design elements already in place for the parking structure. And then lastly, another option would be to place a building closer to the digester. This delivers about 89 parking spaces back and then delivers a building of about 6,400 square feet. And personally, I think this is the one that really allows us to maintain the farmer's market in this general area as well. So the square footage where we are today with the farmer's market could be essentially taken advantage of in the gray area adjacent to the orange building that we're showing there and the parking spaces in front of that. All right, so we've zoomed out, we've looked at the Village as a whole. Now let's zoom into a little bit and talk about some site utilization concepts around the City Hall. What you see here today is just the existing footprint of what's there. We're all familiar with the City Hall in green, the Fire Station adjacent to that. And then behind tucked off the side street there is the Police Station. City Hall is about 25,000 square feet today. The Police Department's about 12,000 square feet. And the Fire Department is about 6,500 square feet in their current configuration. As we've looked at this, we've kind of taken the constraints of zoning requirements off of the table here just to see if could the city utilize this existing facility and get the types of square footages they're looking for? So we've been loose with the zoning requirements in this, but what we have done is really, as a driving force behind this is thought that the City Hall as we know it today, the single-story facade with the colonnade up front, that's a critical part of our town, and we want to maintain that. So every design concept that you see kind of builds upon what's there today, which is the historic facade of the building, the colonnade, the first few conference rooms past the front door. We're retaining all that. And today, sitting behind all that is a two-story building, can't really see it very well. But we want to maintain that same mass and scale that we have today without trying to overbuild in this area and take away from the character of the downtown. So in this instance, what we're proposing is here at the ground level Long Forest, that most of the City Hall functions would be provided. So coming in the front door, we'd have all the shared spaces that we would enjoy as the community, where we can come, the one-stop shop. We're working with the Planning Department, the Building Department. We maintain the City Council chambers where they exist today. And we're proposing that the city's manager's office moves from the far left side, which used to be the Recreation Department, for those of us that have been here for a long time, and proposing that the city manager's office take the first floor of the Fire Station. In the back of the building, on the ground level, we have Community Development, Public Works, Transit, and the City Clerk's Office. And then we leave that small touch point that the Police Department has with the city off of the alley, with the public lobby there that we're accustomed to today, and the Sally Port. Now, here's the trick, this one's kind of tricky, you got to follow along here. We're on the first floor, now we're going to go down to the first floor, down below. Because where do you get a lot of square footage on a very tight site like we have today? We have to start looking subterranean so that we can maintain the mass and scale that we have there today. So subterranean to the first floor, we're proposing the IT Department, Evidence Storage, Dispatch, and the Jailing. These are functions that can kind of function in darker environments, specifically the dispatch. They typically prefer darker environments, the evidence storage, the IT, those things can happen in darker areas, a little more susceptible to being functioning down in subterranean spaces than some of the others. So if we've gone from the first floor to the basement, now we're coming all the way up to the second story. On the first story, you saw mostly City Hall. Here, you're seeing that the Police Department takes a larger presence on the second floor. Because we've created a floor plate that's way more efficient than the one that's there today, that has some interstitial garden space that's not effectively used, we can take advantage and still deliver natural light and some access to the outdoors, but in a more efficient way. With the remaining portion of the second story going to Finance and HR risk on the left-hand side. So in this instance, we have a programmatic requirement. When we've talked about what the city residents would like to see and we talk about what the staff needs, the indications are that we need about 38,000 square feet for the City Hall. In this instance, we've provided that 38,000 square feet. And the Police Department needs about 29,000 square feet. And the design solution that you've seen here offers only about 27,000 square feet. So collectively though, this is a gain of about 21,000 square feet over the existing structure that's there today. So that's Option 1 of the City Hall. To give you a sense of massing, we'd start to look at this in section. Really hard to see in plan personally, I think this brings it home for me. This is what we're pretty well accustomed to today. The one-story historic facade of the City Hall, Long Forest Avenue. A two-story structure sitting behind that with City Hall in green on the first level, Police on the second story, and then some of the lower-level basement functions we were talking about for the Police Department and City Services down there. So that's Option 1. Option 2, or Option B, as we have it labeled here, is a very different approach. In this approach, what we're saying is, okay, let's create two different buildings. And so we actually reduce the footprint of the existing City Hall. In doing that, we make way for a roadway that could go between a building that you see here in the front for City Hall and a new building behind that for the Police Station. We do need to respect the idea of having fire turnaround there. So we've produced this fire turnaround that is, in the event there were a parking structure there, we're kind of thinking about worst-case scenario as we go through this. You see a question?
I'm sorry, did you explain why they need additional space?
I didn't, we didn't.
So could you start with that first?
Yeah.
Because I mean, we need to talk about 20,000 additional, and that's going to be coming out of our taxes.
Understood.
So we really need to, when you spend that kind of money, how is that going to improve the life of us?
Yeah, I hear that.
That's where you want to begin.
Yeah, and you're right, I skipped that, no, no, not at all. Yeah, yeah, no, that's a great point. So I think that starts with the Facilities Condition Assessment where, and I may have skipped that when I was talking about what we had done there. So that's where Griffin, using its experience doing programmatic requirements, it met with all of the city staff. It looked at data that's also available to it through other projects and publicly available and to see, what is the typical types of square footages that facilities, that cities similar to ours are operating with? And so they would come to find that one particular department was working with much less square footage, I'm being very broad here, than other cities of our scale, our demographic, services that we provide would be accommodated with. And if you'd like to add anything to that, feel free.
Three, nine, ten. Do a much smaller interview. I'm making sure the time, so the Police Department has scale, then they have the kind of future. Facial requirements, I think, to get that, to connect to the market.
So does that mean the police can't do their job because they don't have space? And it's just kind of, yeah.
Yeah. They can't. I think there's operational things. I also think as you, as you look into the future, there are concerns about recruitment, where if you can't provide spaces and amenities that your police force, your fire department, your city staff are accustomed to from other cities, it makes recruiting a little bit difficult. So we're looking at, what do we have today? What are typical standards in other cities that are similar to ours? And then we're also trying to project into the future. And remind me, Dustin, how many years out are we projecting? 20 years out. So when you're thinking about a Facilities Master Plan, it's not something that we're trying to solve the next five years. We're trying to solve something that's 20 years away, and as the city grows, how do we accommodate it?
Because the citizens, we don't want to see. That's something that's been said over and over again by the citizens, we don't want it. We like it the way it is.
And yeah.
Continue on, we're talking about if that addresses the police. But what about the rest, the other City Hall, not the hard problem, but the regular stuff? By how much additional space are you proposing for City, you know, for City function?
Yeah.
Compared to today?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think the questions that you're starting to ask are ones that we would have to do a deeper dive into the Facilities Condition Assessment. We can provide the information that says, this is the square footage today. These are the comparative analysis that we've done against other cities and share that information with you. I don't think we're prepared to do that this evening, but you can start. I think it helps you give a guidance, yeah, it's a starting point. Do we have to match them? That's the choice we get to make as we go through this process, right? We can start to see that if these are the types of square footages that are needed to accommodate what other cities are experiencing. If we decide that that's not the right thing, you can provide that feedback and it can go into ultimately the City Council deciding which parts of this we go for and which ones we don't.
I noticed that the structures in blue, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but not that far in the distance past, we had a fire actually burnt that hill. And worrying what kind of fire resistant materials they're using for any of this.
Yeah, very sensitive. Yeah, absolutely, very sensitive subject here. And I think you have to take that very seriously when you're talking about anything on Laguna Beach. You have to take it even more seriously when you're talking about a hillside like this one. When we're talking about this type of construction, you're probably talking especially in the subterranean conditions, concrete structures below grade, so we can waterproof those effectively. Above grade, you're probably talking about hardened materials, steel construction. But that doesn't mean it has to feel like a steel structure either. But we'd be building with fire-resistant materials, practices that enclose eaves, for example, protect mechanical equipment from taking in sparks. So yeah, there's a whole process that. That's really way beyond where this is in terms of, these studies are just to throw out some ideas, get your reactions, feel where things are right, where things aren't feeling right perhaps, and letting that infuse where these goes. We're just looking at how the site might be used. As you go through this, I wouldn't get too enamored with architecture. We're just talking about big massings in terms of, do they fit on the site or do they not? And what feels right, what feels like that accommodates the town? And then we take that feedback and we might start reducing, we might size increasing depending on what we hear from today. So nothing is set in stone by this, these are just ideas of, how does the city accommodate the things that its residents are asking for and the things that the staff indicate they may need? And we don't know which one's right or wrong yet. All right, so as we continue on Option B, on the second story, on the building behind, we'll do a subterranean solution in that Police Facility in the back. The Dispatch, the IT, the Property Evidence, things that are more storage-like, we do have the Jail component down there as well. Coming up to the third story, that's third story, excuse me, second story. So at the Forest Avenue site, you'd see the first level in gray is the existing City Hall. Leave that, we build behind it, we build around it as it generally is today. And then we have the IT functions, the finance through the shared spaces. And we're starting to see a really fun community element come into the Fire Station and bring some of that back to the city itself. I think this one is best helped by a section. So the idea is that the City Hall footprint is actually reduced from what we have today because we're removing the Police Function. We're keeping that single-story facade along Forest Avenue and then bringing the second-story element that we're accustomed to in the back. Behind, which is kind of set back and out of view from Forest Avenue, would be the Police Station and trying to keep it in close proximity mass and scale to the City Hall. And we do that by the subterranean level that you see here on that building. All right, so here's the one that's probably going to create some conversation, let's do that. I know we're all passionate about the farmer's market here and how do you contend with that? This is probably, of all the facilities that we've had, this is the one that is the most critical. The Fire Department, the main Fire Department of City Laguna Beach is too small. It only allows for two apparatus bays, and it's not seismically sound. It doesn't meet the requirements of an essential facility that all Fire Departments and Police Stations are required to maintain. So we've worked closely with the Fire Department, they've done some studies that talk about response times. And just from the Fire Department's perspective, they would like to be a little bit further down and closer to the Canyon Road. And they would also like to create a situation that doesn't require them to back up and block traffic as it comes into the building. So this is a idea, and again, we're here to hear feedback from you of how this might play out. So we've really thought about the mass and scale of City Hall. How do we align with that? How do we continue to connect that, I'll call it a pedestrian-friendly, a person-friendly facade of the City Hall? So we're suggesting that the building for the Fire Station be closely located next to the City Hall. A similar two-story scale is there. And then we have the apparatus bay a little bit further away. This apparatus bay would accommodate three devices, three apparatuses. So you could imagine three fire trucks, engines as we have today, or two fire engines and two additional paramedics, something to that effect here. And what the beauty of this solution is, is that coming off Forest, it would take up some of the parking that's there and allow for them for a quick in and out on this particular facility. It would also provide them some parking that firefighters need in the area. You have a generator and trash enclosure here. So when we look at need, the programmatic need that's been established, right or wrong, is 11,600 square feet. The design solution that you see here today matches that, 7,000 of that would be here on the ground level. Then on the second story, we have the administration functions, not just for this particular station, but for the entirety of the Fire Department of Laguna Beach. So between what you saw on the first floor for administration and here on the second floor, this takes care of all the administrative functions that the Fire Department needs with the sleeping quarters for the firefighters who are on-site at the rear of the building. So 4,000 of that, 11,000 square feet is here. So here, the, just to give you a sense of the structure, the scale of something like this, Forest Avenue is on the left, in the black line and dashed would be the apparatus bay beyond. Again, please just don't look at this from an architecture perspective, this is not that. This is just size of massings to see, does it or does it not fit here? Where does this bring us concern? Those are the questions we're looking at here. All right, so we've looked at the Village Entrance, we've looked at the City Hall, the Police Station, we've looked at Fire Station number one. Now we're going to zoom across town, we're going to go over to Aggett and Glenary. Yeah. So the gray area that you see here, where we've got the turn aisle, this would be accommodate the fire apparatuses coming onto the site, turning around and going through the bay. So you can see right up here in the left-hand corner, that's the lift station that's there today. So this is predominantly the footprint of the farmer's market.
But that would be, that would be bad, so that's not available, right?
Correct.
Is fire area, is fire department?
Correct, yes. So this area, I measured it this afternoon, that's about, where the footprint of the farmer's market is, is about 30,000 to 35,000 square feet. That same amount of square footage, 30,000 to 35,000 square feet, is accommodated for in the other parking lot and the space between the digester and the lift station. So as we've talked about, you know, what impact does this have on the farmer's market? That's a really critical part of the community. Can that shift over? We think it can into some of those other spaces. We haven't, yeah, not yet. All right, so now we're. So now we're gonna move across town to Aggett and Glenary. This one's a tricky one. We thought the downtown was tricky. This is also very difficult. What's most challenging about this one is the surrounding residents and the view corridor that happens to go right over the top of this building. So we want to be very sensitive to that. What you see here is the footprint of the fire station as we know it today. We do really, whereas we were a little bit more lax on the zoning analysis elsewhere, we really focused a lot on it here. We've respected the setbacks, the height limits that are in place here and really trying to work within those to the best of our ability. Today, there's three secure sparking spots, four for visitors, and the building itself is about five thousand square feet. So in this instance, what we're proposing here is that we leave the existing apparatus bay there. It accommodates two apparatuses. And we're proposing the inclusion of a new generator and trash enclosure, leaving the, this probably isn't, could use a little bit of clarity. This gray area here and the gray area that you see over here, those are parking aprons, drive aisles, they're not building. The building is simply the gray and the apparatus area and the red elements that we've added there. This site has a really interesting feature. It falls off pretty quick as it's going towards the ocean. So in the interest of view preservation, we've kept everything to match the height limit of the existing apparatus bay. So we're not going higher than what's there. And we've taken everything, not subterranean, but what they call, I'll call it a California basement where it's kind of daylights out onto the lower half. So we'll see that here in a second as we do that. And then the living quarters are below as we show here. I think these again are best shown in a section. So if the lower left hand side is, section B on the left is Glenary. And then on the right hand side, that's the ocean view side. So you can see we've maintained the height limit of the existing apparatus bay and worked everything below that and staying well within the height limits that are there. And the upper section, section A, where you kind of see us going from Aggett on the left to the shared property line with the adjacent neighbor on the right, you can see how that fills in. That projection into the additional building setback, I think could be dealt with from an, with architecture laying that back. So I think we've done a, there's a nice pathway for respecting the neighbor's view, but also delivering back the square footages that are needed, which I forgot to touch on. So today they're at about five thousand square feet to meet the standards that would be any firefighter would be accustomed to when they're working in a facility of this nature. The programmatic need is about nine thousand six hundred square feet. The solution that you're looking at here is eight thousand square feet. So there's a lot of times where we look at design options where the need may be X, but the site just doesn't accommodate it or the best solution may not accommodate that. So you're not always going to be always getting what's been asked for. All right. So if that was option A for this fire station, which is fire station number two, option B starts generally the same concept. The only different here, difference here is that we remove the communication room that's there and we add an additional bay. I could see this one being a little bit challenging for residents in the neighborhood because it does bring more up on to Glenary itself. But if you look at this in section, same concept where we put most of the bulk down on the ocean side below the existing roof structure that's there on the left hand side as you see in section B. That's where we're coming closer to Glenary. Now, the last option that we look at for this particular fire station is a complete change of orientation. We've kept the height of the apparatus bay as it is today as kind of the sacred thing to stay below. So we've done that. But here we've actually moved the apparatus bay so it accesses taken off of Glenary. The support and the administration functions are more on Aggett so people can approach it from the neighborhood. And this is where we had to go to get to the nine thousand eight hundred, which is just about a hundred square feet short of what it would ideally be at at ninety-nine hundred square feet. This one does accommodate three apparatus bays is the other benefit of this one. We'd have living quarters at the same height as on the second story. And you can kind of see the mass and scale of this one. Again, closer to Glenary in section B, well below the height limits, but filling a little bit more of the site, quite a bit more dense than what they're accustomed to in that neighborhood today. Yeah.
Your concern about fire. Very serious issue.
Absolutely.
So from your professional perspective, which of these options makes, maximizes the safety of the community regardless of the size of the building or whatever? That, that, I think that's your principal concern. That's what we should be looking at.
Yeah. I think to answer that question, I, I want to be thinking about first and foremost, which buildings need attention? And all three of these buildings are of the critical nature. None of them are seismically sound. So what we can do to quickly come in here and fix these up? If I start to think of it physically in terms of financial, I think I would go towards some of the solutions that more quickly could be built, could be more economically built versus trying to remodel and retrofit a lot of the things that are there. So I don't have an answer specifically, but what I'm thinking about when I'm trying to make a decision of which path I want to go through, I'm looking at what's the most cost effective? What's the fastest? What's gonna deliver a building that's seismically sound? And then I think about the context of the neighbors around it and what fits the mass and scale of the neighborhood.
You take into consideration the cost of power.
Clarify that.
Have the most impact in terms of getting the firemen to fire.
Yeah.
Way to be able to put out.
Right.
Particularly wildfires.
Yeah. So the one that really brought the most attention to response time was the one in the downtown. From what we've heard from the fire department, they don't need to make adjustments at fire station two and three. Three is the one on the top of the world, this is the one that I get. The one that needs the most attention is the one in the downtown. Now, I was quite surprised when they brought that up. I thought, oh, just moving this thing down half a block makes a difference? And they said, yeah, the studies they've done can decrease response town by a few seconds. That doesn't sound like much, but you know, I've learned that a few seconds means a lot. How we doing? Lot of information, yeah? Yeah, we've been working hard on this. And again, we don't have, we're not looking at specific answers. We're just putting out ideas and we welcome this feedback and it's really helpful and helps us decide, yeah, this is or isn't resonating. All right. So we've been at Aggett and Glenary and we're gonna go up to top of the world and we're gonna take a look at that fire station. Really interesting fire station, interesting configuration. You're familiar with this one. It, when it was originally constructed, as far as I can tell, it was put on this forty-five degree angle so that it could allow for a drive through apparatus, drive through situation. What I've in talking to the firefighters there, that no longer works for them. So that driveway is predominantly parking at this point and they continue to back up off of Alta Laguna. However, if continuing to retain what was there and this becomes one of those considerations, hey, maybe this one needs to be more cost conscious. There may be value in keeping what's there. We think about that. So in this option, what we're proposing is that we take the apparatus bay, leave it alone in terms of its size. We move the admin function and the support functions all down to the first floor. Currently, the first floor has some housing element for the firefighters there. So we're putting all the support and admin functions down there. And then we're proposing that the living go on a second story in this particular solution. Now here, the existing building is about twenty, I'll round up twenty-five hundred square feet. Programmatic need here in terms of what this station of cal, the caliber of this station needs is about fifty-nine hundred square feet. So this first option only gets us to about fifty-one hundred square feet. But shows you kind of the mass and scale here in section. I think this is rather different, you know, in coming into a community where this has been one story all these years. And just those little touches into the additional building setback, I think could be managed pretty effectively with architecture. This is tucked back. It does kind of pull off of tree top lane. It, it works. It's, I probably shouldn't talk about favorites or non-favorites, but I'll leave that aside. Plan option B. So if that was option A, here's option B. We've got three options for this one. One of the things that struggles with this particular site is the parking. There is no parking other than the drive aisles. So a lot of the cars find themselves on the adjacent streets. The other thing is that kind of the building is up on the tree top lane street. That's for those of you not familiar, that's the one on the lower left here. So this one sets the building back a little bit further. It does get closer to the residence above that and then takes the approach that we're gonna back in off of Alta Laguna. But by taking that weird angle of the forty-five degree angle off the table, it does tighten this up. And I think it presents itself a little bit better along tree top lane. On this one, we'd have the sleeping quarters on the second story here. And again, today we have about twenty-five hundred square feet. We're looking for fifty-nine and we'd get to sixty-six with this one. So this will maybe be a little bit bigger than we need to be. So could we pull out some of the living space? Could we pull out some of the administration space? Absolutely. And then, so this one is, has the parking that you can see there as well. That's probably the biggest benefit on this solution and pulling up off of tree top lane. So as we go through these, what we're gonna be looking at when I conclude here is more feedback about, do any of these resonate? Are you a resident in this neighborhood and you'd like to see it setback? Are you the neighbor to the north there and are concerned about being that? So hearing those concerns are what we're looking for today. And I'll be quiet here in a moment. You guys will all have a chance to share your thoughts. Sectionally, this is what this one looks like. To make this one happen, you do have to encroach into some of the rear yard and some of the additional setback more aggressively than some of the other solutions. But I think if we're over square footage, pulling this in a little bit to respect that is very possible. All right. This is probably the hardest one to understand. So we've gone through city hall, police station. We've been through all the fire stations, the three fire stations that are on the table. Now we're gonna come over to marine safety. Yeah. That's not a part of this one. That facility is already under design, under a different agreement. So yeah, we didn't look at some good question. Thanks for bringing that up. Marine safety, existing footprint, northerly under Main Beach there. To have this conversation, we have to zoom really far out for a moment first. Right now, we've, most recently, we've taken on some additional beaches as of late. South Laguna, most notably Liso, right? So currently with these new beaches, this is probably the most underserved of all the functions that we've looked at, considering that they're operating in this one building down off Main Beach. So this, we had to get a little bit creative on. So for a moment, just zoom out and assume as they operate today, don't assume, but what you have to know is a little bit about how they operate. So today, they park in the city stalls by in the city hall or in the village entrance parking area. And then they make their way down to the marine safety building. So we're gonna keep that premise in place, but we have some options here. There's one that says, okay, let's have everybody park as they do today and travel down to the marine safety building on Main Beach in yellow and have them go about their functions. They would do their changing there, change out into their uniforms and depart to their assignments at different beaches. Another approach that we're taking through our study, I think we found that the public works building, the Jim Lashley designed building across the street from city hall, that may be a surplus building that we could either leverage for a design solution that we're gonna option here or something that we consider doing other things with at a later point. But in this option, we tried to take advantage of it. We said, okay, what if we had people come from the parking lot, had them go to this building here in orange, change, do some lightweight administrative functions and then make their way down to the main beach headquarters or depart south? So when we take a look at that idea, let's zoom into the main marine safety building in Main Beach. We're not proposing that anything changes on the first floor. Those public restrooms that are there stay. The administrative office functions and the dispatch room that are there, they stay. Where we try to take the bold moves are down in the basement. So down in the basement today is a combination of lockers and some offices and the training briefing. This is one solution where we would say if the lifeguards are gonna be in parking at village entrance and making their way here, we have to give a better changing facility, a better locker room. So we proposed a general, gender neutral locker room with private areas for showering and restrooms and changing with shared locker areas that are right adjacent to the training, training and briefing room. So you could imagine somebody parks village entrance, makes their way here, changes into their uniform, gets their daily briefing and then heads out to the various beaches from here. Alternatively, if we want to say the building across, the public works building across city hall can be used for a locker room that we'll see here in a moment, we could take the downstairs space and provide some much needed administrative functions for the marine safety. So we would convert that lower level away from being a training room into more offices and workstations. So in this scenario, people would park at the village entrance, go to the public works building, do their change, do some lightweight administration and then come here to do their daily tasks. So what is a building, what is a conversion of the public works building look like? A little bit tricky. It feels a little peculiar to me, the, the nature of that building in terms of its architecture. And I've, you know, I've, I've known so much about that building. So this one takes a little getting used to. But the idea that on the main level, the one that sits right above the parking is where we would do something similar to what you saw in the previous plan, a general neutral locker room where we have private areas for changing and showering and then just the shared locker space, a break room on the main level. And then this building, if you didn't know, it does have a second story to it, a third story. In fact, if you count the parking as the first one, where we do some office space there. So people would be coming here, changing and then going on down to Main Beach or their southerly stations there. So in this solution, I forgot to mention the square footage here. So we're trying to get about, we have about six thousand square feet of the building today. And what we've heard from the fire station, we need about an additional five thousand square feet of space to do that. So these solutions offer that. Now, another option that we've taken a look at is one of the facilities was Lost Pier. Lost Pier turned out to be a pretty fun little space. I think people are starting to resonate with the community. It's a very difficult space to renovate, to do something with. So we've kind of said, let's leave that be. And let's look at what ideas might be around providing an additional five thousand square feet somewhere else in the city. So in this instance, what we've looked at is a couple logical places where something of about five thousand square feet could go. So you could imagine a world where, okay, we're not going to do the conversion of the public works building. We're gonna leave some changing facilities at the main beach facility. So some of the staff can go there, change, get their duties for the day, go to the functions that are in that particular area. And another portion of the marine safety staff would be coming here, changing functions, administration and working with the southerly parts of the town. So some wide, some very different creative ideas there. All right. Man, this is, this is thick. I promise you, the other two segments are less dense than this one. But when you try to put all the civic facilities together, I'm gonna go a little off script. You tell me if I'm off base here. Probably a good place to pause and maybe let people ask some questions about what we've seen through fire and public safety before we jump into the corporate yard, which is next. How's that feel?
Sorry, I wasn't off the top of my head before.
Sure.
Appreciate everybody being here. The way I look at this, those folks involved, the government closely, you don't have a lot of time to deal with, right? So I start to prioritize. I end up prioritizing the fire station. And I think that's hopefully could be helpful for your discussion. Think about tiers of work to tackle the fire station, see what's spending and have left for other things. So it just means that I need prioritize the city hall as important as that is. I don't, I would hate to have a lot of discussions focused on that because that's probably not gonna happen in my lifetime. Certainly not in my work lifetime. But the fire station hopefully will. And, and the civic and cultural arts building folks talk about. That's just what, I don't wanna cover any of your thinking, but just know that's how I live.
Good perspective.
Thanks, David.
Appreciate the amount of work that you've done to. You can't hear me?
I appreciate the work that you've done to come up with this, with the drivers being comparison with other towns and other resources and, but I think Laguna is rather unique in itself. I think we're solving the wrong problem here. The, the national fire marshal told us that the LA fires were a conflagration. The LA county fire chief Anthony Moreno said that the LA fires, there was not enough equipment in all of California to manage that fire because we have a conflagration issue. So I think, I'm wondering now if it's conflagration, it was came up in any of these as a requirement, as a, as a design issue. Was that, was that taken into consideration for your plans?
Clarify your question for me. I didn't. Did you say, state your question again? Sorry, I was distracted by writing a note that I need to put down. Could you restate your question?
My question? What I just said? Was fire conflagration taken into account in any of these plans for Forest Fire Station?
I'm not sure I know that word. Could you? Conflagration.
That means when entire neighborhoods are consumed by fire because of climate change, they're driving this thing because of the western drought, because of, because we're spending way too much emphasis on fire response over fire prevention. Was any of that taken into account for designing these four fire stations?
I would say that these solutions were looked at more in isolation. And we're looking at it from the perspective of the facilities that we have, what can they accommodate? To do a study that, I think that what you're talking, very important, especially in a neighborhood like Top of the World, that's got the valley behind it, coming up behind it. But I think that's a different study that needs to, you know, you know, maybe be done and influence this, but we didn't do that. We're looking at each site very individually.
I, I may try and answer Les' question too, and I appreciate what you said. There's another group looking actively at the wildfire prevention and safety of our state ad hoc community. We just met one. They're looking at how do we prepare the community overall for wildfires? Whether that is the DOPA wars, Zero Space Patrickors, you think of Berkeley Districts, but nothing within five feet of your home. Nothing you like to be, especially here on the outside of the community. We're looking at the physical legal modifications, but the lesson point, there is no way the city of Oregon would be prepared with that kind of conflagration, good staff and good building. So we're managing our fire safety services for hopefully the ninety-nine percent of time that does happen, where it's a small fire, it's a medical response. We're just making sure we're in the right places. We have buildings that are not going to collapse and on earthquake. And then we're ready for that. When, if, if and when the big one happens, the big fire happens, we're going to be calling all the resources from everywhere around us to help us provide that safety to the community, the quality of that. And again, that's a focus of this other ad hoc committee on May sixth. The City Council meeting, they'll release their report very thorough. But it's not, it's done and gentle.
Thank you for adding that clarity. And I apologize. I didn't know some of that background.
I have a question. We're talking four fire stations here in the city of Albany Beach, basically.
There are four. We talked about three today.
Right. How about Arch Beach Heights? There is a huge residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's basically ignored. Yes, you're going to slide across the between Top of the World and Arch Beach Heights Boulevard Avenue.
Yep.
And I think if you're going to build this route, you need to pick them up at neighborhood by the time you get a fire truck and the court staff up there in event of emergency. I was there in nineteen, whatever it was.
I see that. Yeah. Yeah, it's not easy to get across that road between Top of the World and Arch Beach Heights.
The amount of money that's being spent, maybe some of the flood needs to go away, and we need to just think about fire stations and adding something to Arch Beach Heights neighborhood.
Those are the kind of feedback that we're looking for.
I just, one thing, and I apologize. When you ask a question, just give me a moment to give you the microphone. So I just want to make sure I capture your comments and questions on the video here for, for, both for people to view and for me to catch up on notes after this meeting is over, for all the great comments we're going to hear tonight. But just give me a moment to give you the microphone, and then we'll make sure we capture it on the video as well. So thank you.
Great conversation starters. Thanks for bringing that up.
Hello. I was in city management in the city of Long Beach. And the police department there was originally built in nineteen-sixties. And it was torn down twenty years ago and rebuilt. Same with the City Hall was built in the seventies, totally redone in ten years ago. I think Laguna is actually a little bit, a lot behind. And I can speak from an employee working for a city. It's nice to have newer facilities. The architecture makes sense. Fire makes sense. I, I agree with the city manager. The fire department should be the priority for sure.
I'm just, excuse me, I'm just curious if there was, is any possibility of keeping the fire station where it is? Or, or is that just, it's impossible to retrofit it and leave it where it is?
Anything's possible. When we approached the design problem, we were really thinking about efficiency and effectiveness. We're also trying to really respect the historic nature of the City Hall. Was that a right or wrong decision? I don't know yet. To do what would need to be done to bring that to an essential facility would take up so much room that it would probably start to impact the city council chambers. So we just made the design choice to, let's relocate those down the road. But yeah, anything's possible. Where do you want to sacrifice? Do we want to eliminate, remove that building? Absorb the City Hall as a design choice? We just didn't. But how does that feel to you? Would you, what would you rather see? What's more important to you? Fire station where it is, expanding and maybe impacting some of the historic nature of the, of the City Hall that's there? Or what are you thinking? No shared thoughts?
No, it's everything's maybe even our. But I'm just.
Yeah. Yes. I would say it's going to be more expensive to retrofit the building that's there. Yeah. Yeah, sure. I typically find new construction is more cost-efficient and effective than renovating, especially when you're trying to do something substantive like a seismic retrofit that meets essential, essential facility requirements. So question back.
I may have misunderstood the drawings that you had up. So, but it looked like Marine Safety is below sea level is where their, their equipment is, where they're calling all, calling all cars, let's get out and help, whatever. And it looks like the downtown fire department's the same. It looks like it's below sea level. In a flood situation, is that being, I assume that'll be considered the end, but.
Yeah, you're correct about the Marine Safety. Their basement is below sea level. That's the existing condition that's there today. So we're trying to work within what's footprint, the footprint that's there. There's not a lot of expansion space there. It could be susceptible in a tsunami or a significant flood event for that to be impacted. Their dispatch area though, the one, the all-hands-on-deck where they're dispatching their lifeguards is up on the main level that is at beach level. Now, being at beach level, you're still right there. But I think the ability to have eyes on the beach was what led to that decision. So we've not changed that. We've kept the dispatch on that main level. The fire station, I apologize that the drawings, they are, the diagrammatic nature can be difficult. That is not. That is at the main level that you see with the City Hall today. You know, that is a lower-level part of town. So we're talking tsunami events, et cetera. That could be a possible challenge, but it's not subterranean. It's the main level as if you were to walk into the City Hall today. And then the police station, that is up behind. And any, we do have police functions, subterranean on one of those design options. So if that was a concern, then the option where we have the police station behind the City Hall would probably be more appropriate to address a concern like that. Yeah.
I'd like to say first that I agree with city manager that priority number one should be retro.
Yeah.
And money is definitely an object.
Yep. I agree with the city manager that fire stations should take the first priority on any consumption of capital for the city. Question I have is, if I understand it correctly, downtown, we currently have two fire engines and you're proposing three. What was done, what study, how did we determine three? Why not six or seven? It seems to me that we're adequately supplied with two now. So why was it three? And if it's three, why isn't it four? What formal study was done other than just, let's have another bay?
Who are asked, that many of you will ask questions that I can answer tonight. I would say in this instance, the way we've gone about the facility's condition assessment is we've connected with the fire department and the chief specifically. And we've received information that they've done studies on. So I can't answer that one, but I think the answer may lie in with the fire department says, these are the needs that we have. So we'd have to go back there to find that driver.
I think that's one of the things that residents have an issue with is we're never told what the needs assessments are before we start spending consultants' money, our money on consultants and coming up with plans that first, don't we address what our need is and what we do have? I can make a wish list of everything I want, but what do we need? And who has established this? If it's just the fire department that's established it with no oversight of some kind of review committee, then hey, why?
Great point. That's the second time we've heard that tonight. Okay.
Keep me answering questions, but hopefully it's helpful. There is a fire standards of cover study that went to the council that's on our website. There's also a fire strategic plan that was done by outside folks, had public input. The, the input's always welcome, but I believe it's, these plans are based on the standards of cover study and the strategic plan. So those are worth perusing if you haven't taken a look at those. Okay. Remember, we're talking about apparatus, not, they're not all engines. One would be an ambulance, one would be an engine, one would, could be a different type of like a wildland fire vehicle. What really matters is the staffing in the station to make sure that those staff can get into the right vehicles to get where they need to go. And that is addressed in the standards of cover study. Yeah. So you and I would have to take a deeper look at that. I don't know it off the top of my head, but they are linked together with some rationality.
A bunch of fire stuff. On the needs assessment, there, this is an interesting answer from the city manager. But there was a needs assessment done when, before your time for the prior fire chief for Fire Station Four. And when we were talking about Fire Station Four, I was asking whether that needs assessment had anything to do with the design, and it didn't. People didn't seem to be aware that there had been one done. On, on fire, the pull-through, you, you, you just about knocked me out of my chair with the pull-through. The, a big part, once again, the one, the station you're not talking about, Fire Station Four.
South of Good.
Uh, in South of Good. The design is largely driven by the fire department request that they have pulled through. And you're talking about pull-through for the hypothetical Fire Station One. And then you said that the one at Top of the World was designed with pull-through. I don't remember your words, but it was like, it didn't work out. They don't use it. Well, wait a minute. And, and why is, why are they not using the one that they have in our, because it takes a lot of space is the problem. You could really.
Optimize, yeah.
You, you could design something dramatically different if that were not something they were trying to accomplish. And then the last one was just on Mary's comment about keeping Fire Station One where it is. And I understand, you know, what you said about they can get out to the canyon quicker. In the conversation on Fire Station Four, either one of the designers or one of the planning commissioners who've been involved made the comment, you know, people like the architecture of the current City Hall building and the old-fashioned fires that we like. We like the old-fashioned stuff. And if you're moving the police from behind the fire station, Fire Station One, you'd have some room. Now, again, I understand everything you said about, yeah, it could be difficult and all that kind of stuff. But, and, and, and I, I probably would err on the side of fire safety over, you know, historicity or whatever. But that is a fact. I mean, a lot of people, this is an artistic community and we like our, you know, charm and stuff. So you're just taking it out of there and plunking it over on the other end. You're going to affect, you know, the look of that building for what it's for.
There are a couple of questions in there that I'll try to respond to. The easiest of those is probably the question about the Top of the World. Why that drive-through doesn't work anymore? The size of the apparatuses have changed quite a bit since that building was first designed. So the slope that comes off of Treetop Lane has not only a significant slope, but it has a warp to it that prevents the vehicles that now sit in those, in those bays, don't work. So in that instance, because we're working with such a small site, you're right. Those drive-throughs require a lot of space. And if we can't overcome the transition of warping that sidewalk or that drive aisle, excuse me, into the building, our only option was to do a backup on that one. So you're absolutely right. When we do drive-through, we got to take up a lot of space. Now, I did struggle with, as you're designing these options, these site utilization studies, that as we move further down Forest Avenue closer to Laguna Canyon Road, that gets quite a bit congested over there. I couldn't imagine, as difficult as it is for the fire stations to stop at the intersection of Forest where it is now and back up. That creates a little bit of congestion, but to move that further down and put it closer to Laguna Canyon Road, especially with, you know, something on a, a farmer's market day that's so congested right there. I don't think you can find a spot down there where backing up into the facility makes sense. I like it. I like the idea that it reduces and gives more back to the farmer's market. But in that instance of that location, turnaround was an option that we thought fit best to that and let that come down. Now, I agree with you. I think, I, I love the City Hall. I think the historic nature of it does need to be honored. I think you would be so disappointed by what it would take to retrofit that building and retain it as a fire station. It would be a caricature of itself to do that. So we made a design choice, right or wrong, to try to preserve that. Let's return more public-serving functions in that space. I don't know if you noticed it, but on the second floor, we saw that space becoming a community space that people could make use of, really enjoy the architecture, not just see it from the front, but actually experience it on the inside. So that's a design choice we made. And in making that choice, we did have to put in the apparatus turnaround space in that. We did try to keep it closer to the City Hall. I think we're pretty good architects. I would absolutely want to blend that and trying to keep it closer to City Hall versus standing off on its own was, again, a design choice we made. Yeah. And we're here to hear if those are good or bad choices. Yeah, thank you.
Can you put the slide back up for the Marine Safety structures that you were going to put at Aliso? Yeah.
Asking for a big lift here. Hang on. See if I can do it. There you go.
Okay. In seventy-four, we made a decision to make a window to the sea in, in the middle of town. Then when they did the montage, they didn't put a parking structure so we could see the sea there. I really would be against anything that would block any view from Coast Highway to the ocean. Anything that you're going to build there needs to be tucked someplace like the main tower is now. In the seventies, we had a chief that wanted to make a large structure behind the main tower in the middle of the beach now. Unfortunately, the city said, no, we're not doing that. So that view corridor from Coast Highway to the beach is something that needs to be saved. So nothing should be built out in the middle where it can be seen, tuck it someplace.
I agree with you. I, I had to show options. These are different alternatives. There's not all three, any one of these. I, I agree with you a lot. I.
None of them are good, though.
You know, where do you get five thousand square feet for Marine Safety in Laguna Beach? It's a tough problem.
You can do things across the street at the park. You could. I'll help you find a place.
Yeah. I think, the park, I thought, didn't make a lot of sense. And there's a lot of, that's one of a couple of locations that could happen at the park. But the idea that that's about five thousand square feet is what we're trying to get across.
I want to keep, just be aware of the time. So maybe one more question on this, and we'll let Charlie finish.
Gregory Israel in South Laguna. This is actually my same point here. That parking lot where C is, is generally vacant. Maybe the weekend it's full. And then B is where there's a pretty decent playground for kids. That green area, there's like a little bathroom building, which is redundant. There's like ten stalls by the Lost Pier. So that grassy area, I don't know if it's, what that's used, what's underneath that, but that might, or the back of that parking lot could be useful too. That grassy area, I don't know if it's, what that's used, what's underneath that, but that might, or the back of that parking lot could be useful too.
I could see A. You know, there's, there's lots of different places where A could go if you, I like the idea of backing it up, getting closer to this bluff. Yeah. Yeah. So again, these are just, what does 5,000 square foot look like in this area? Good or bad? I don't know. Yeah, okay. Concerns about A and B. All right. I'll make note of that. Great conversations. Thank you for your input on that. It all informs this. All right, we're going to move ourselves into the Public Works facility out at Act Five. This is the existing footprint today that you see. And so buckle up. We're going to look at a couple of ideas. So first one, simple, probably won't create too much concern. The idea here is that the staff, as we're talking about working with them and understanding what their needs are, have expressed a need around more secure parking for the city fleet vehicles and the people that work in the facility and elsewhere in the city. So in this simple solution, what we've proposed is that we introduce a security gate that would put more parking spaces behind that security fence for the city staff, significantly reducing what is a critical resource for us in terms of parking in the summer. In this instance, programmatically, we are looking to secure a fleet of about ninety-three cars. And we're trying to accommodate eighty-six staff members who are there and the few visitors that come. So in this solution, we've been able to provide that ninety-three secured spaces and the visitors would be accommodated as well. This does though reduce it down to only sixty-two spaces for the public, significantly less than what we have today, but a total parking space of two hundred and forty-one. In addition to the parking needs, the, the staff in this particular facility are looking for more office space. So there are some spaces on the second floor of the Public Works Building that are used for storage, the pallets that go up on the light poles during the holidays and the banners during the summer stored in the main building that you see here. So we're proposing that we create a new storage there in green. And then very simply convert that storage space into some administrative functions for the folks that work here. All right, so sectionally, rather simple, kind of working within the footprint that's there. Functionally drastically changing the site from the perspective of less visitors, more for staff. All right. Another alternative, when we're trying to address the functional needs, is we could not add that little building in the back. We could optimize what's going on on the first floor to create some space to remove that storage for the second, on the second level, and return that admin space to the second floor. Now, how do we start to begin to address the need? What are some ideas? What are some utilization concepts that would talk about how do we not only serve what the staff and the people of Public Works needs, but what do visitors and the city need in the way of parking? One of the things that I've learned through this study is everything, most of the options, I can't say everything, most of the options that we look at usually end up having a parking impact. You, when you want to infill, you need to grab some square footage, the logical places to grab that, park that free parking space that's available. So how do you replace that? As a resident, I hear a lot of conversations about the parking structure. And when I hear about the parking structure, I usually hear it presented in the nature of visitor serving. Why are we building a parking structure so more people can come into town? What I've started to realize about going through this exercise is as we pull parking from potential sites, you know, you saw a possible solution at Aliso that took away some spots. You're going to see some other solutions that take away spots in places like the Playhouse, et cetera. Those start to show to me that they're, oh, there is a resident serving function behind a parking garage. I know that's not a popular topic at times, but it started to realize for me, oh, oh, here is, there are things that the residents of Laguna Beach want to provide, things that we're going to see some pool options, we're going to see some gym options, we're seeing some things that address outdoor player areas. And when we do that, a lot of the times means pulling parking around. So finding other alternatives for parking in town is something that I think has to be on the table as part of the conversation. So this option is something to consider. What we're suggesting here is that there could be a parking structure where the Act Five parking lot is now, keeping the security gate generally where it is. I'm not going to belabor what happened for the building itself. That's rather minor in nature. I'm going to focus on the parking structure from this point forward. But what's proposed here is a solution that could bring three hundred and fifty-three parking spaces in total to this area. It's serving as a parking area now. We'd still be able to get the ninety-three secured fleet parking, the visitor in the parking area that the staff of this building needs. But we would also, instead of the, I forgot what the number was, the sixty or so parking spaces, this would deliver a hundred and seventy-four paces to people using this parking lot. Now, what I'm going to show you here is a two-story option. And two stories delivers the three hundred and fifty-four total spaces that you see here. There are ideas where you could put a subterranean basement in there and add more parking spaces to that. And that would add another hundred and twenty-two public parking spaces to the mix as well. So we'd have an additional, instead of one seventy-four for public, we could get upwards of two ninety-six. There's also an alternative where you could put a third story on this. Personally, I think it's getting a little bit out of mass and scale of what would be needed there, but an option. So in this idea, the, that you're seeing here, this utilization study you're seeing here, somebody would pull in off of Laguna Canyon Road. Visitors or somebody from the community who would want to park here would park at the first level. And then they would ramp up, oops. And then they would ramp up to the second story. That's where all the secured parking would take place for this particular building. So in section, generally looks like this. So it would be stepping down, we'd lower the grade a little bit there to keep the, the, the scale of it down. And you can see Laguna Canyon Road on the left and the existing building on the right there. But a way to get somewhere in the neighborhood of four to two stories of parking in this particular area. Then the last facility inside of the civic realm that we have here is the animal shelter. This is a rather straightforward design option. Today, the marine mammal facility is doing an expansion that you see here in light green. Proposal is to extend that a little bit further to the north, I'll say in this drawing, and then fill in on the second story. So along Laguna Canyon Road, we've got the Act Five parking lot, an option that shows some reconfiguration of that space, a possible parking structure there. And then we have the animal shelter as well and its needs up the street. So I will pause. More questions? I'm sure there's lots of conversation around the parking. Haven't heard from you yet.
For the Act Five parking garage, did you think about the other activities that occur there such as the compost and electronic waste? Like how that would be accommodated once that's done? And then my second question, so I don't have to get this mic again, has to do with the animal shelter. And the dotted line that you show on the animal shelter sign, if that is indeed the setback, I'm guessing that's the zero, the dark one. That's where the nonprofit is building their building on that. So I'm just interested in what your thoughts are about the function of that building with its wall and what would need to occur at the animal shelter. Because right now, what's enclosing that yard is, I guess, another property's wall.
I'll take the Act Five parking lot first. At this level of the study, we're not looking at the detailed functions of the movement of traffic. What we're focusing on is what generally fits there? What does a two hundred and something parking stall look like, parking structure look like in that area? So I can't say we've gone to that level of detail yet. Once we decide that, yeah, oh, that is or is not the right move and all we want to do is maybe just as administrative function, solving that problem gets solved one way versus, oh, we decide a parking structure, we'd have to solve it another way. So we're not to that level of detail yet. On this particular, I, I may not be totally following your question. Were you asking about this dotted line here or were you talking about this one up here?
Oh, I'm talking about the one, so.
This one?
The dotted one.
Running along, yeah.
So that, that area that you have as the outdoor area. That thick dotted line.
Yes.
Is the wall that I guess is the other property, but that's what you're.
Yeah. No, this black solid dotted line that you see there, that's simply the setback. So showing that the building, the outdoor space in this expenditure there is within the setback. The open area and the block wall that ultimately creates the border between the two properties, that's the green dash dot line that you see up there. So we've not made any impact to the outdoor space on the animal shelter area. All we've done is the, the Marine Mammal Center has extended and you can see it constructed today. I don't know why they didn't just kind of extend over to the edge of the existing building. So we're essentially working within the footprint of what's there today and what this building created. We're infilling that little area. And then we're just simply coming over the top of this in that solution.
Being able to expand that extent by adding a wall for the shelters at that.
Adding a wall. No, I can't say we looked at that. This was one of the kind of smaller needs. We felt that there was the simple solution of kind of going second story, blending in with what was there.
So can we just take, I think, two more questions and then we'll take a, just a five-minute stretch break and give Charlie a break to take a breath, two more. And then we're going to get into the recreation facilities after this. So much more to come, but you could tell these, a lot of material to go through.
Parking, parking structure. The, I'm going to probably regret saying this someday. But the financial feasibility of remote or peripheral parking, where we provide parking, where the city provides parking either down at the hospital or wherever, it's either free or cheap. If you put parking for visitors at Act Five, they're not going to walk into town. You're going to need to provide transit. So you're going to get little or no revenue. You're going to have the full cost of the structure to build. You're going to have the debt service on the bond or whatever it is that finances it. And I did the math on this a while ago. If you're going to run a trolley every ten minutes from twelve to, you know, twelve hours a day, the cost, the internal cost that I was told for a city trolley is a hundred and fifty-two bucks an hour. If you take that number times twelve hours, times however, and you need two or three trolleys because they get stuck in traffic, you do the math, it's almost as much as the debt service. So whatever you think it costs to build a remote parking structure, your annual payments for debt service, you got to add a really big number for transporting people. And you've still got operating costs. I think on, our budget has shown that operating costs for parking is like thirty-five percent of gross. So if you're not getting much gross, then your operating expense is much more than thirty-five percent of a smaller number. So remote parking is really expensive. And I said, I, I don't, I hope I'm not going to regret this because I'm not arguing for parking at the village entrance.
Something we had to explore and see what it feels like. I understand what you're saying that, yeah, it's not just the cost of the building, it's the operational cost that you have to consider as well when you're making.
Maybe time for one more short question, or we could take a five-minute break and.
I'm listening if there's a question.
Okay. I have the mic. Thank you. I won't regret asking this question, but here it is. We adopt, we did not adopt our complete streets, enhanced mobility, complete streets transition plan. That's what they call it. But it's a phony document. I wondered if you guys addressed it or used it as a reference for where we're going with this mobility plan? I mean, if we're going to do a facilities master plan without one, that seems completely silly to me.
I, I probably have to take a moment to maybe talk about the role of the architect in this particular exercise. There are many studies out there that all need to be factored in. The exercise that we've been tasked here with is do the sites that the city currently own facilitate some of the needs that have been asked for, both from residents and the staff? So we're simply looking at it from the perspective of, do we have enough facilities? Do we have enough sites? Do we need to go and acquire more? Do we need to let some go because we have a surplus? Ultimately, as you make decisions about what part of these things that you want to pursue, I agree with you. You need to look at some of these other studies. I agree with you. You need to understand where the perspective is coming from, how we arrived at those needs. At this point, I really feel like the question at hand that we were trying to answer is, is there enough space for the things that have been asked for? And I think the answer to that is yes. Now, are they the right things that we need? Do we all agree on what the right, the needs are? How do we justify what they are? How do they fit in to the other studies that have been done are something that we have to do as you go into some of these other options.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and come back. And we'll be talking about the Community Services and Recreation, which is the Susie Q, it's Laguna Beach Community Recreation Center and Lake Park. So those three facilities. And I know there was a lot of questions, a lot of material. If you'd like, you can leave me your email address for contact. I will send you out all of these concepts. And, or you can email me and it's FMP, Cities Master Plan, FMP@lagunabeachcity.net. You can email that. I will get it. Any information or questions you may have, send them to me. Because as we said, we're, we're trying to gather as much information as we can. We'll eventually be going to the council for another workshop to talk about all of this. You can see it's a lot of material, but we want to make sure we capture everybody's comments and suggestions. So thank you. So five minutes. Okay, and I'll let Charlie take it from here.
All right, welcome back. So I promise that that was the most dense part of the evening, a lot. I appreciate all of you sticking through that. I realize how difficult plans can be to look at sometimes and sections. I look at it every day. And I'm still challenged by it at times. So I appreciate your patience and thank you for your feedback. Where are we headed next? So Community Services and Recreation. The three facilities we're going to take a look at are the building we're in right now. And then we're going to jump down to the CRC and then we'll take a look at Lang Park. Probably the easiest of all the facilities, this one. It's relatively new, well-used, well-maintained. I had the honor of designing this building almost 20 years ago. So great to see it in use and I've watched my kids have, you know, made use of that exercise studio. So I'm very fond of this building and take a little bit of like, do we really need to improve it? But yeah, 20 years has gone by. Some things have changed from an office perspective. And maybe time to take a different look at this. So what we've heard from the staff here and for the most part is the feedback that we're getting on this one, is that there's really not enough office space in this particular building for the great people that run it for us. When we first designed this building, there was a different vision for this kitchen. And at the moment, it seems to be a little larger than it needs to be. So we've looked at that area as some opportunities to pick up some space. Diagram's done a little differently in the sense that this is the kind of floor plan of the whole facility. We're sitting in this part of the building right now. And what we're looking at over here is just an enlarged view of this smaller section over here. So in this instance, what we're proposing is that there, if you were to walk right through these doors, you'd go into a beautiful kitchen. Behind it has a scullery where we can wash dishes and there's a pantry and lots of storage back there that is probably more than we need. So we've looked at how we might extend the workroom, the open office back into that space, picking up, you can see about 400 or more square feet of space for office back in that area, without any impact to the rest of the facility that you're there. And then reduce the kitchen and bring it a little bit closer to this room here and not have to actually walk through that hallway and beyond into the kitchen. We also see some opportunities, the computer room that's right next door to us, the boardroom. There might be some space in there to optimize, maybe change one of them into two rooms if we're looking for space. I think this is a very personal effort here where you'd be working with the staff and the city to figure out what would work best for them. Another option would be to keep the, keep the kitchen more in proximity to the size it is today. And what we're seeing is a trend in the office is more towards open office instead of the enclosed offices that are there today. So reduce the number of enclosed office, open up the amount of square footage that we have there and go to more workstation seating there where you can put a few more people in an open space. And again, this is about bringing more staff into the building. On a personal note, it, this does create an opportunity to perhaps bring this back as a sitting area for the parents who are waiting for their children. I know there are some concerns about watching the kids and being a distraction. I think there's lots of architectural ways we could treat that, something as simple as film across that window. And when we brought back some office space, I think that's an opportunity to return that gathering space, which is what it was intended to be, where the community can come, gather in that particular spot while they wait for some of the activities in the art studio and the exercise rooms to end. So rather simple, straightforward. I think this is an optimization exercise more than anything on this particular property. The storage behind this building here?
Yeah, because I'm on volunteer.
Yeah. For this, but, oh, yeah. Tight, isn't it?
Very tight.
Yeah, I didn't know bargain bonanza was stored in there.
Yeah. I lost everything else, all of the decorations, parties, special events.
Okay.
And really it's very tight.
Yeah, that's a need we haven't heard. So I'll add that to the list. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Just all we see, all the chairs, the friends, getting in and against, the stuff that we need. The theme, obviously, including stuff.
Yeah. Yes, storage is always a, never heard anybody say they have enough storage. Okay, let's go on to something a little bit more substantive. Maybe that's the word. Always like to center on what's there today. So here we are, zooming down to the Community Recreation Center, what used to be St. Catherine's, if you're not familiar. We have a recreation building on the, the upper part of the site there. In the middle, a beautiful chapel. If you guys haven't been to that facility, I encourage you to go. It's amazing little opportunity that I think the city could make great use of. We've got marine safety, some of the police department, recreation department is operating out of there today as well. And then we have the soccer field down below, the skate park, the jungle gym are there. So today, the, I want to move that square footage number for the chapel, but it's small. It's a, I think it's less than a thousand square feet. We got the gym at 12,000, the admin and the elementary components that used to be there, that makes up about 17,000 of it. And the middle school piece that was there previously was about 600, 6,000 square feet. And today, there's about 47 parking spaces. This is another one of the facilities that we kind of put zoning constraints to the side for a moment. I know that may be an unpopular statement, but what we did was, again, could, what could you fit on this site, depending on availability of space without being constrained? So we loosely kind of think about it. As we look at the facility, let's do a little bit deeper dive in what's actually in there. Many of us probably haven't been there before. To actually understand what's in the inside is helpful. So there is a big gym in there, beautiful gym. It's got a stage, in fact, that I think many people, I know we've, I need, always needed another stage in town. Beautiful little space and then some multipurpose room, lobby area, break room around that. Up on the upper level, it's some storage space that serves the gym. On this bar that kind of comes off the chapel, the little blue building there in the upper left, we have some office space, classrooms, the marine safety is nearby, restrooms, the gym classes and early childhood center on the bottom part of the site. The skate park and the jungle gym are there. The skate park is a temporary space that's there. And then up on the other, one of the other levels. And then up on the other, one of the other levels, we have more classroom-like spaces. And then down on the far southerly end of the site, some more classroom spaces, a science lab, and the art room that's down there. So, cool. I'm sure people have interested in where does a pool go? And I think this is the first opportunity where we get to maybe have some of that conversation and what options were maybe. I was really inspired by, and I think you maybe brought this to my attention, that a pool near the chapel could be a really compelling element. This is an option where a very light touch with what's there today, we could bring a rec pool. This happens to be 16 meter by 17 meter, far shorter than I think what the town is interested in, something more in the 45 meter to the 50 meter space. But the idea that this could be here is really compelling to me. I see some opportunities, if you've been down to the Ole Hanson Building down in San Clemente or the casino, the Casino San Clemente, beautiful event space. I think you introduce some water near that, this could start to rival that. I think it has that kind of potential, simple to do. It's kind of a space that's underutilized today. I know the kids are enjoying the skate park. There are opportunities to consolidate that a little bit. But here's the first glimpse of where a small recreation pool might fit. To look at this in section, on the far left of this diagram, a Pacific Coast Highway, and we're kind of going up into the bluff side there. And you could see the pool kind of sitting right in front of the chapel. I could, the view out of that is spectacular, really great opportunity there. Something low-bearing, simple to do, works generally with what's there today. All right, so now, let's look at some other alternatives. So one of the challenges with this particular site is parking. At present, I think it has about 47 parking spaces, I think is what I saw in the other one. We're seeing an opportunity where we could bring a total of about 122 parking spaces. We're suggesting in this solution that the gym and the buildings that are there today generally stay and that we bring a more substantive parking lot to the field area. Now, above that, I think you need to, you can't just take a field away, right? You have to provide some amenity to replace this. So in this one example here, we're making a suggestion that parking happens at the level there is today. And then sitting above that level with the street that's there today becomes the field. So we have a field that's on top of the parking, beautiful views out into the Pacific Ocean. Nothing really changes about the site in terms of its access and transportation through it. And if we take a look at this in section, where before all we saw was the parking lot and the pool, now we see an option where the field takes the place of where that parking was. So we bring that amenity that we lost with parking, but we bring it back by elevating it up onto the main level. All right, here's another option. So we looked at a pool, or sorry, a field. This is the raised play area. And then we've talked about the idea of, let me back up a, right. So what we've showed you so far are options around maintaining the existing facilities. But this drive aisle that crosses through the site is rather challenging. Kids who are trying to get from here over to here, a little bit challenging. It doesn't, it's, it's rather disconnected. It doesn't feel like a holistic thing. It feels like just kind of an appendage off to the side. So we started to now look at some options of, what would it look like if we started to take the constraints of the buildings that are there off of the table? In this instance, what we have here is the idea of parking where the gym used to be, moving a community building up towards the front and closer to that field area that we've been talking about. And now for the first time, this may be controversial a little bit, or the idea of maybe residential behind that. One of the things that we have to think about when we're going through this master plan is, how do you ultimately fund all of these things that you want to do? I think the city manager mentioned that earlier, that how do you, how do you, financially do you accommodate this? And these are opportunities where portions of the site might be able to be sold for residential purposes so that some of those funds that come from that sale could go to building some of these structures. So in this one, we have a community building and a field solution. And then this is probably where a pool begins to make the most sense. Here, above the parking deck that we've shown down at that ground level, we're proposing a 50-meter pool in this area. I couldn't imagine a more inviting pool with this view. Trying to connect this building, when you have the pool, connect, getting closer to the building is a really important factor with people changing and showering. So it starts to make sense to deliver that building closer to the pool deck here. So sectionally, what this starts to look like is the first option I showed you earlier, where we've got the building next to a field, or down below that, the building next to the pool with the parking down below as it kind of hits Pacific Coast Highway. And the zone in yellow behind is where residential may take place or could take place. All right, this is the one that will probably regenerate the most conversation, I'm guessing. Another alternative that we've looked at here is the idea of, there is lots of things that we want to do that probably have outpaced the funding that we have available. Converting something like this to residential is a substantive opportunity where some of that funding can go through. This site could hold up to 60, 76,000 square feet of residential. Is that the right move? Don't know. But is it a way to create some funding for the city to do some of the things that we're looking for? Absolutely something that should be talked about and see where it fits from a needs and wants perspective. So from a massing perspective, what this would look like is the drive aisle down the middle would stay. We'd take that lower level field area, convert that to kind of single-story, one-story structure there. And then behind, two- and three-story options there as well. Pretty dense, more dense than anything that we've seen there. But you'll notice that the line that, that makes up the back of the property of this residential does generally align with the school that's there today. And it makes an effort to maintain this hillside that's behind it, which is pretty steep, hillside protection zone. Quite beautiful. So where's the, the trade-off? Do we consider residential back there? Do we move that forward? And clearly, there could be some hybrids of those as well. All right, Lang Park. So now we'll come down to Wesley, just down the road a little bit. This is the park we're all familiar with today. Got the play area, the T-ball and soccer field, the pickleball courts down here, the gym and the Annalese preschool up there with the parking in the gray up in the upper left. So here is an idea where we say, let's try to create some buffer between the residential neighbors around by moving the buildings that could be proposed and the field structures that could be proposed here closer to Coast Highway. Move a community center down into the bottom left corner that you, bottom right corner that you see today. A U9 regulation-sized soccer field that could be there. And moving the pickleball courts onto Wesley Drive. The idea would be that you'd pull in, you'd walk into the community center and you'd have all this at the same grade. In that community center, some of the things that have been asked for by the community that could fit in that space that we saw as a gym. So if you were to go with some sort of residential solution or pool solution at CRC, replacing that gym is a possibility here. Space for about 4,500 square feet for a preschool. And then what is also restored here that's available to us at CRC today is the stage. Small stage there that you see in blue. And that is then adjacent to the pickleball court and soccer field. This is about 20,000 square feet. This building itself is about 20,000 square feet to give you a sense of scale. Sectionally, if I'm looking on section A of the top one, Pacific Coast Highway is on our left-hand side with the parking behind. So you see I'd arrive in the parking lot and then we transition into the building. If I'm looking at section B, Wesley is on your far left and the residential component's on the far right. So we've got the community building buffering the neighbors from the field area. And up in the upper level, we have the parking lot buffering the community building itself from neighbors above the hillside. So another option, similar concept, but different programmatic elements. So in this instance, here's another opportunity to do a pool here. The example we're showing here is a 25 by 25-meter pool, short of the 50 and 45 that we hear the need for in town. But you could imagine a world, if that were a priority and something we wanted to bring, losing a tennis court or a set of pickleball courts to expand that pool in that direction is a possibility. So there's a 45-meter to 50-meter pool option that could exist here. And a pool building that would separate the parking and the pool from that and the community center as shown there. Community center-wise, all those functions, we talked about the gym, the stage, the preschool, the administrative functions, those are all staying the same. 20,000 square foot there, about a 2,000-square-foot pool building that goes in there. And section-wise, section A, Pacific Coast Highway is on your left, same configuration that we saw before. But section B, now you can start to get a sense of, if Wesley is on our far left and the neighbors are on the far right, you see that buffer zone between the residential and the community, the pool beyond that, and then some fields and/or tennis courts beyond that as well. All right, so we've looked at an option that kind of brings parking on the back, sets that up. It's all kind of at the same grade, so to say. This is an option where we start to ask, what happens if we took parking subterranean? Coming off Wesley, as we do today, people would be driving down into a ramp where the parking would be below. But you see a larger configuration of a community center and a play area, a little different footprint. That's about 21,000 square feet now. Get a little bit larger pool building at 2,300 square feet. And again, if a 50-meter or 45-meter pool were of greater interest, replacing that with the pool, the pickleball courts is clearly possible here when you just look at scale. So that's another option. So it'd also accommodate a small T-ball area that we all love to do down there today. Community center, if you were looking inside of that, same programmatic functions, just different layout. We have the gym, the preschool, the stage area, a little bit bigger in terms of its footprint. And then this is where the parking would be underneath all of that. So what I like about this option is parking is kind of secondary to the site where it was a little more dominant on those first two options. But this is all below grade, it kind of takes that away and lets the site be about the buildings and the amenities and the features that are there. Sectionally, this looks like what you see here. Again, in section A, Pacific Coast Highway is on the far left. So you can imagine the cars below the building and the building sitting above that. And then section B, Wesley on the far left, you can see the parking is below. Sitting above the parking is the different fields that we provided, the pool building and the pool itself, and then some pickleball courts on the far left end of the site there. The third, the fourth, and final option here is another way to do subterranean parking. This would be coming off Wesley Drive. I personally think this is, while it works functionally, I think it's a little bit difficult to navigate. And I think it puts one of the most beautiful spots of the site with drive aisle and parking. So not overly enamored with that. It kind of compresses things to the south on this property. But we keep that same community building that we see there. And then same functions that we saw on the inside earlier. And then below the courts and the pool that you saw there is the parking structure. So if we look at that in section, you could imagine a world where, again, the parking is hidden, kind of taking away from the site and leaving the site being about buildings and fields and the, the topography that's there. So two different sections there. Pacific Coast Highway on the left in section A, Wesley on the left in section B. All right. Yeah. Please. Tell me which one.
Just any of them. Because for the record, this, this is where I live.
Yeah.
And Patrick, who had lived, is there. These are the residents who are affected by the nightmare that has become the pickleball courts. So as long as you do that, be, while I'm still alive and while they're still alive.
Yeah.
I will take anything, I will take the pool, I will take anything next to us but the pickleball courts. But I was so encouraged when I saw this.
Thank you for saying that.
God, it's going to happen. And then I realized I'm going to do that. And I'm going to leave and thank you so much. But yeah, just, just move the courts. It's just all about moving the courts. Because they're still too loud.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amazing job, any of them.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for presenting all these things to us. Obviously, you put a lot of work into it and a lot of thought. Let's go back to the one, the Catholic Church. And I'm, what I don't see there is something related. I was, several weeks ago, I was in the same room and there was a panel of people talking about low-income housing and the lack of low-income housing in Laguna Beach. And that's a high priority. We'll be under, the state is requiring us to do something. We're not doing anything at all, nothing. And I can't imagine why you didn't come up with a Plan D or something for low-income housing there, especially in view of the fact of all the complaints that we're getting from the people who live around the, the church, you know, the congregational church. This is an opportunity because no one's going to complain that their views block. And this is, you know, so I think that you need to go back to the drawing board and come up with something like that because that's what the community needs. That's what you should have done in the first place. And I, I don't see why you didn't.
I, let me respond to that. I actually neglected to mention that, I'm sorry. When we looked at these residential options, the square footage that you're seeing here does factor in affordable housing. So you couldn't get to the level of square footage that you're seeing here. So in these solutions, affordable housing would be accommodated. Yeah, so anything that we've talked about for a residential perspective is that at first and foremost. Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. Yeah.
Different swimming pools. So is this?
I'm curious about the swimming pools that you proposed. Would this be in addition to the remodel of the swimming pool at the high school? It would be a second swimming pool that would belong to the community? Is that the idea? Okay, thank you.
I saw a slide with 394 added parking spaces and I saw a slide with subterranean parking with a pool on top. I don't see how that could be, be affordable housing. But I wondered if you had done any options for relaxed parking requirements?
Terminology, relaxed parking, what do you mean by that?
Well, instead of two and a half spaces per unit, you would knock it down to a half a space or one space.
A lot of these design solutions don't meet the programmatic parking demands that are there. And we've also looked at it, kind of sans what the city requirements would be. I would say that most of these probably have fewer parking spaces than the zoning code might require. So this again was a test fit. And we're trying to see, much like this building operated, in fact, we looked at this and how many parking spaces could we accommodate financially, within financial reason? And then what we started to say is, okay, that can support this amount of square footage or it can support this amount of square footage if we do a time-use study that says, okay, this is when people are coming and going. So a lot of our studies, and I've mentioned that a couple of times, are sans the zoning constraints that we put on ourselves. So a lot of times when we're in projects like this, it's like, what can you accommodate? And then you start to build the building, the footprint that you accommodate. And then where you still come up short in terms of building size, then you start to get into time-of-use studies. So yeah, I'm, I agree with you.
Well, there it is, 394 spaces. That's, that is added spaces. There were no spaces there before.
So you'll see that, that's the required. And that's maybe not required by the city, but functionally, what a facility like this would accommodate. And you'll notice down below, right there, we only did 100. So far shorter than what you might normally see in a facility.
So that 394 is driven by present zoning requirements, right?
Can you clarify that, Dustin? I think that's more programmatic, what, it's what? Demand-based. So typically, what we would say is a facility of this size, if you were to look at a demand in a similar community, that's what the demand might require. But we're saying, hey, the, the real estate is so precious here. We can think we can come up with alternatives, whether it's time of use or transit. And we've only done 100 spaces. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is probably, well, it is, is kind of a moot point now, because what I was going to suggest before this lady who lives in the spaces, in the houses near Lang Park, seems to be happy with the movement of the pickleball courts. But I know that's a contentious issue with a lot of the neighbors, and I wondered if any thought had been given to putting the pickleball courts at St. Catherine's, since that is a recreation center in there. Unless we build the housing that you're suggesting, there is no residential housing there right now.
I, I think pickleball court could fit, you know, the field, very flexible. Kind of have to think, I was wondering, what does a soccer ball look like going over the edge of that? What does it pick on? So yeah, I think you could do something like that there, absolutely. Yeah, I think there was a question in the back.
Thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering, there are so many young families in Laguna, and there's a huge need for childcare. At CAC, did you ever, did anybody think about a childcare center there? There's already an existing building for early childhood and a kindergarten classroom? Was that ever considered?
Was considered. I think when you look at some of the other options where we maintain, it's tricky to do, you maintain some of these. I could see where any of these potential facilities could maybe be converted to that. When we look at them today, you know, those are those classrooms that you're talking about, is a school today. I see a pathway for that, if that was a demand. If you go down to Lang Park, yeah, they have, we did accommodate the four thousand five hundred square feet there as well, so, yeah, that's. Yeah. Yeah, I think so. I think there was, was there a question here? Oh.
How much does subterranean parking cost to a project?
Not cheap.
Yeah. I think Don Schub said it's like forty percent, fifty percent. Okay, so that's not affordable housing either. Well, affordable housing, according to the chair of our Affordable Housing Committee, is twelve hundred bucks a month. How do you meet, how do you hit that number? Subterranean parking and a swimming?
I guess I'm not understanding. So in this solution where we're talking about residential, there is no subterranean parking in this solution. This one?
There was a cross-section with a pool. Just using those elements, does it have a?
Let me go back to, I think I know the one, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this isn't subterranean. This is the existing field that's there today on that level. We would be utilizing that, paving that, and then we'd be building a lightweight structure over the top of that. Considering it's a field, it's not as substantive as some of the other subterranean parking spaces that you've seen. So when we talk about subterranean at City Hall, subterranean at Police, those are expensive efforts there, I agree with you. And when you talk about subterranean parking at Lang Park, yeah, you're right, that is expensive parking there. But in this instance, I don't think we've showed that, and I think when we've done some design concepts, I wouldn't see subterranean parking there either if this were residential.
So we say fifty percent, that's fifty percent cost of the project.
Subterranean parking? I would, what do you think? Yeah. I, I couldn't tell you a number. Yeah, but you're right, it is more expensive, absolutely.
Are there, oh.
No, you're okay.
Why don't we do just two more questions and then we'll take another two-minute break, go to the next section.
I just wanted to say thank you, because I think we saw a lot of really good options, and I think, I think it's exciting that we're thinking about any of this, to have a real recreation space for families that includes pools, gyms, pickleball, tennis, all of it is something that we need more of. I think it's really exciting to think about a future in Laguna that includes some of this stuff, no matter which way we get it done. And I think there are a lot of really cool options here. The other thing I will say is, yes, the chapel is absolutely beautiful, so it's hard to look at those solutions that tear down that beautiful gym, beautiful chapel. I like seeing that little tiny pool, because you can imagine some of our small kid needs could be met with that pool. And, you know, I think that chapel is a beautiful wedding facility and could be used in other ways. So, you know, some of that preservation gets exciting to me, especially if it's easy to add parking and the field there. So I think there's some easy ones there. I think the reimagining of the Lang Park space is exciting for the future, because that could be the real community center that we need here. And I hope, you know, we're kind of lacking, I would say, in this young room, myself included, of any young families with kids. My kids are in college. So I would, I would really hope that we lean in as a city to including those voices, because they are not in this room.
I have a nine and seven-year-old. I think, and I am in the Laguna Beach Parents Club, I, it's more of a process question than anything else, these are all really beautiful plans and options. What, like, where gain of these many parking spaces, we're gonna have a net revenue gain from these residential units, and parking's gonna be here, not here. And overall, this, these are the options that will be selected for all these different projects over the next twenty, like, whatever years it's gonna take to do all these things. What does that process look like? Is it a vote to the town? Is it more of these kinds of meetings? How does this, where do we go from here?
I can probably help with answer that. So tonight was obviously the first of the town halls to get a lot of feedback from the community and the ideas and suggestions. The next phase is going to the city council with both what you see tonight with Charlie's presentation and all the comments that we've seen tonight, and then get some feedback from the council on what they see as the next steps. And ultimately, it's to come to a plan as to what this, what's the priorities for the next several years, especially with funding and sort of things that'll come into play in Phase Four. It's like, you've seen a lot of plans, but obviously there's costs associated with that. So we'll bring this phase forward, then the costing phase, and I think you'll eventually see a plan in place, hopefully by the end of the summer, where you'll see a final document. But obviously, like I say, there's a lot of material here, and so we want to make sure the community and the council have plenty of time to absorb it all, because when you go through it all, it's a lot to think about. So town hall tonight was great. If we need to do more, we will, just to get more feedback. But eventually, the idea is tonight, and then to the council in June, and then a financial plan later, and then a final document with direction at that time. Okay, we'll take a, maybe this time a three-minute break, give Charlie a break, take some water, and then we'll start on the next phase, which is, and I want to say, so I don't miss out on the next facilities, but it's the Arts Culture and Library Services, so it's gonna be the Laguna Beach Library, the Festival of the Arts, and the Playhouse, and the Forum Theater.
Okay, are we ready to get started?
How are you? I wish. Glasses. All right. All right, so who's been here from the beginning? Wow, all right. I think we'll get you out of here at eight o'clock as promised. I was worried that some of those questions were gonna take this longer, but I think we'll be pretty close. So thanks for all of you that are sticking through this whole thing. Thanks to you that've come to each of the different subject matters. We're gonna close tonight with taking a look at the library. And many of us are passionate about that. Talk about the Playhouse, that's a facility that I don't think gets a lot of coverage. I'm excited to talk about that. And then the Festival of Arts, some really interesting opportunities that existed those facilities. All right, let's start with the library, yeah? All right, so as we do, the existing footprint. This is the footprint as it exists today. We're all familiar Laguna and Glenary, right there on the corner. Hiding one of my notes. So today, about eleven thousand square feet. Of eleven thousand two hundred square feet of space that we enjoyed there. Beautiful building. It's, it's hard to see some of the changes that have occurred to it over the years. I think there are opportunities that we're gonna look at today that start from something simple and kind of restoring. Restorative idea, working with what's there. Out of the other end of the spectrum, which is, how could we expand within this property? And again, that's been a lot of what this study is about. Can we work with the facilities we have? Can we improve upon what we have? And I think the answer is yes. So with this, the eleven thousand square feet of space here, we have about thirty-four parking spaces for visitors and staff. So option A, when we look at this one, we're gonna start down at the lower level where the parking is. We're not proposing in this option any additional square footage here. So this is just an optimization of the space. Here, we're suggesting that the Friends of the Library could stay here. While it says staff in green, it's the Chamber of Commerce, they too could stay here as well. We've got the mechanical rooms and the trash enclosures beyond that. Now, moving up to the first floor. This is where we all come in off of Glenary today. We would come into the entry area and then work with the staff space that we have, the restrooms. Clean those up, make them a little bit more functional. The low, the library program space, which is the meeting room behind the children's area. Maybe expanding that a little bit, beautifying that. Keeping the children's area where we're accustomed to it today. And then reorganizing so that the adult section collections are up towards the Glenary side of the building. And then moving a teen section, we do have that small enclosure in the far left corner. Kind of left corner, I'm thinking as I walk into the building, but right here, that's the heritage collection. We could give that a better, more substantive home and deliver the teens there. This project is about trying to work with the funds that are becoming available as part of the transition from the county to the city. So you can see that this is a very light touch. I'd love a world where some of that money could go to maybe refining the interior. Maybe focusing on the front doors and I know it's gonna be difficult, if not impossible, to get the original ones back, but could we do something to honor that perhaps there? So this is a light touch, a reorganization. We do a lot of libraries at four or five million dollars where you're talking about something like this. You've got to be thinking reorganization of bookshelves, paints and finishes, fixing major systematic problems that are on the building. So rather straightforward. Programmatically, though, when we've talked about what the library staff would need, hearing feedback from the community, there is a desire to take the programmatic needs to about fifteen thousand five hundred square feet. And in this option, we fall short of that with the eleven thousand, since we're not adding any square footage to it. Sectionally, nothing changes here. This is the same building that we know today, same footprint. No infill, no additional space beyond what's there today. All right, so now let's talk about how we might add some square footage to the building. In this instance, we're down on the first floor where the parking is. We're not removing any parking. But what we do have is a small area that would remove the tree that sits out in front of the Friends of the Library and the Chamber of Commerce area and infill that courtyard element. This would help us if we have an existing area of about eleven thousand square feet, would be a first step towards what I'll call the middle option in terms of expansion. It could get us upwards of thirteen thousand four hundred square feet. Twenty-five hundred of that being down here on the first floor between the green and the orange are what are the usable areas for that. So we could see staff coming down here, the Friends of the Library or the Chamber of Commerce continuing to stay there. Now, as we go up to the main level on Glenary, we see a big substantive change at the entry. We're seeing a lot of new uses for libraries. The marketplace is something that you'll see in the library today that's taking place, so expanding to make use of that. We are proposing that the children's area, take that upper left-hand corner. You're looking at it from your seating vantage point, twenty-three hundred square feet, that beautiful view down through the alley to Main Beach, the adult section behind that, so there can be more of a parent-child connection. And then expanding into what is the upper deck today, out towards Glenary with some study space and collab, collab space. So in removing that tree, I think there is an opportunity to maybe present a better face of the library onto Glenary and start to understand what's happening in the library, start to activate the inside to the outside and make that connection, so people can understand and be attracted to what's going on in the space. We would be moving the teens over to the area where the children are today, improving the restrooms and then beautifying the library program space, which is the meeting room behind the children's area now. So in this option, again, we get to the thirteen thousand square feet of the fifteen thousand that we're looking for. Sectionally, you see, this is kind of an infill option. We're taking some spaces, some decks, some lower space below. There's the challenge of the tree, it's a beautiful ficus tree there. We've all watched it grow over the years, but that would be the one compromise we'd have to make in taking advantage of this opportunity. All right. Third and final option, this is the biggest of the three options that we're looking at, and it's a way to potentially achieve the fifteen thousand square feet that we're looking for when we hear from the staff and the residents programmatically. On the first floor, we'd actually propose to just essentially leave that as it is today. And then we would take advantage of the upper level to really expand. Those of you that are familiar with the library, there's these columns that come out from the these beams that come out, the concrete beams that come out from the existing library and they kind of set down in columns right at the alleyway. So we would continue to take advantage of that concept and spread out into the larger footprint of the site. Fifteen thousand square feet does fit on this site. The thing that I like about this option is that it doesn't remove any parking as well, and it's quite the expansion here. We have some support staff, a space that supports the staff. We have study areas, teens again have gotten this area that have that million-dollar view down to the beach. We proposed keeping the children's area where it is in this one. And the big move here, again, in the interest of kind of connecting to the library to Glenary a little bit more is we've moved some of that program space up onto the face of Glenary, so it almost becomes a way to celebrate what's happening in there more expansively than we saw in that other option. So here, quite a bit of spread, we haven't lost any parking. The net gain there is about four thousand square feet. And then sectionally, you'll see that, like those other options where we were doing infill at the first and the second floor, we're doing infill here now just at the second floor. So the concrete beams and the columns I was talking about, those are here that allows the parking to retain, remain as it is today. All right. What do you think, Gavin? We've got a half hour left. I think I can probably get through the next two, the next part, which is the Playhouse and the the Festival of Arts, excuse me. Or I could pause and take questions on library.
I will leave it to the audience. If there's a lot of questions on the library, maybe we can take those I'll leave it to the audience now, or if you want to get through the rest of the presentation, how long, Charlie, you think to get through the rest?
I have about ten more minutes to get through, ten, fifteen more minutes.
Ten minutes, and then we can take, maybe we do that, ten minutes, then we'll take questions at the end.
All right, let's jump to the Festival of Arts. As we've been doing all night, the existing floor plans that are there, the Irvine Bowl, the Forum Theater, the retail shops, the administration, scene shop in the back there. And then you'll see, not colored and gray, but the tennis courts, that's gonna be a big topic of conversation tonight, so keep your eye on that. Today, between the Playhouse and the visitor area, we have about sixty parking spaces that are there. And one of the biggest challenges that we're contending with here is, how do we get accessible paths of travel to the Forum Theater so everybody can enjoy that space? Beautiful space, but not all of us can take advantage of it, so how do we make that a more valuable resource in the community? So with our first option here, the idea is that our primary focus is trying to work with the Forum Theater as it exists today. And these areas in purple you see are ways that we see through ramping, through elevators to bring access for everybody up into the Forum Theater. And then you'll see another purple space called Exhibit Storage. The great people of the Festival of Arts, they do a lot of amazing work there. They need some more storage for their scenes that they put out there, the props that they use, and so we're putting that next to the building as it exists today. So building onto the Irvine Bowl. In the upper right-hand corner, don't despair, the parking struck, the parking lot that you see there is just one part of a multi-function feature that we're proposing here at the tennis courts. So let's kind of, if we've been at the ground level of that first view, you know, we would all walk up, get our tickets to go to the Pageant Masters, go to the Irvine Bowl, we might get some food, that's all kind of happening down at that level. Now we're coming up, so that if you don't know, there's a second story there that we can build off of and connect and bring accessibility connection between the Forum Theater and the Irvine Bowl. And above the parking that you saw there, which was previously a tennis courts, there's been a big ask for an art center. An art center that allows for both private artist space, public exhibition, collaborative studios that we'll see here in a moment. So in that instance, we're having parking down at the ground level and the art center of about ten thousand square feet that you see there sitting above that. So sectionally, I wanted to kind of give a sense. Over here, you can see Laguna Canyon Road would be on this right-hand side. We've got the parking spaces there and the art center sitting up on the second floor. What goes into an art center? That was the question I had when I got this program. And quite a bit of space that has been asked for is, again, remember, part of our facilities condition assessment that I forgot to mention in the beginning was Circle Point, another one of the partners in this effort, was going out and soliciting different community organizations and asking, what do they want? So we had meetings here, we had meetings at the library, we had meetings at Festival of Arts, and we were asking the community, what did they want? And doing surveys, so this is informed by, I'll say, resident input. And so we have a rehearsal space, I've heard that need quite a bit, to complement what's going on at the Playhouse. Some administrative functions, we have a public entry that could be utilized for events. We have private studios, a few of those at a thousand square feet total. Then collaborative studios, so you could imagine a world where some of the artists that have secured these studios in yellow are working collectively with other artists in these collaborative spaces. Larger spaces where you could do more sculptural functions, things of that nature, more large-scale art. And then a great two thousand square foot exhibit space for all the work that's being produced in a building like this. So if that was option A, option B is similar in the sense that nothing's changing about the connection between the Irvine Bowl and the Forum Theater. That, all the functions that we talked about there, what we do here, though, is we change the perspective of what happens over in the parking area. In this instance, we're suggesting, let's put the art center down at the ground level. And what would we do on the second story for the tennis court? So is there a, you know, retain that function? I know a lot of people enjoy that parking space, but this is a way to get both an art center and a tennis court in that particular area. So sectionally, you could see the art center down in purple, all those great functions, the collab space, the studios. That would be at the ground level connected with the rest of the Festival of the Arts ground, which I think has some appeal. And then the tennis courts with appropriate fencing on the upper level to accommodate that. The programmatic elements, all the same, just slightly different configuration here, collab spaces, studios, exhibit space, et cetera. And then the third and final option around Festival of Arts is, talked about earlier. There is a speed and efficiency and a cost-effectiveness that goes along with doing new construction. So we thought it was appropriate to look at, what would new construction look like? Unfortunately, in this option, we might have to consider losing the Forum Theater, but I think we can provide the programmatic elements that the theater provides in this space. So what we're proposing here is that the Irvine Bowl building stays as it is, and then building off of that the square footage. We're looking for, to get about twenty-four thousand square feet when we do this option. We would propose tennis courts over in that area that they are today with this solution, and you'd see that parking, tennis courts above parking as an option. And you can mix and match these things as well, right, if we decide one thing's better than the other. Now, in this expansion that we've done here, you'll see that we've done the exhibit space, the food service that we're accustomed to, the public, the collab spaces, and the studios in here. And the rehearsals pace, a lot better connected to the Irvine Bowl Theater itself. I think that makes better sense, frankly, myself. But where, might you ask, is the theater? So we go up on the second floor, just as the theater is today, kind of on a raised element. We have a five thousand, five thousand five hundred square foot Forum Theater there, some more support space and administration function here. There's a lot of efficiency, it's gonna be much easier to induce an elevator here. I really actually kind of like this option myself. Much faster, probably much more cost-effective than trying to work within the Forum Theater that is there today. All right, last one, I think, I hope. Existing Playhouse, the footprint that is there today with the parking behind it. Today, we have about twenty thousand square foot of space in the, in the Playhouse. There is a programmatic need of about thirty-seven thousand square feet. They have a substantial lack of storage and place to build their scenes. They have a very significant lack of back-of-house functions and rehearsal space to use when, especially when productions are in play. In this example, what we're suggesting is the idea that we might expand into the rear parking lot. And with this, of course, goes some parking. I was talking earlier about, these are one of those resident-serving functions that says, hey, if you want this city, there is a trade-off that you lose parking. Now, where does that parking go? So it starts to, for me, paint a picture of, of resident-serving function behind the parking structure that I hadn't heard before. I've always heard the parking structure talked about as a visitor-serving thing. But as we take parking away from different sites, we saw down at the Marine Safety, if that was a potential loss of parking spaces there, those could be offset here as well. So these removal of parking really starts to tell a story of, I started to gain more value for understanding of the necessity or value of a parking structure there. In this, and perhaps across the street, or the one that we saw at Act Five when I say there. So we're expanding into the back, we're taking out the parking that's there. We provide about program, okay, the, this is a little bit hard to read, so let me clarify this. Programmatically, the demand study would say that a facility of this nature would need nineteen spaces for the staff and it would need eighty-five spaces for the visitors. But to your point earlier about, you know, do we really need to provide eighty-five parking spaces? Could we even do it? We don't have them today. So in this instance, we said, we're actually gonna provide thirteen parking spaces here, and we would have to substantially rethink how we use this parking lot through the summer. But the benefit all goes to the Playhouse and expanding what it needs. We fill in the front there as a possibility as well. And then we would be fixing the mezzanine up that looks down into the Playhouse, providing some second-story back-of-house functions there, and then an administrative and studio space at the upper level behind that. So from a massing perspective, you could see that this would all kind of encroach back into the hill a little bit, taking over the parking space that's there. From a mass and scale perspective, you really wouldn't see this, it'd be tucked behind the building, which I like about this option. So you can see from the front, you wouldn't see much of a difference. Now, I do struggle with the idea of taking out all that parking. That's a valuable resource, so what would an alternative look like if we were to try to save some of that parking? So instead of going all of that parking gone, we're just taking a small portion of it. In fact, what, a lot of what we're taking right now is consumed by some containers that are there. And in this instance, instead of the nineteen, we can actually get to twenty-seven parking spaces substantially below the eighty-five that another facility of like nature in another community might have. But here, what we're doing is we're putting the back-of-house function where we showed it before, but we're going a little bit further into the hill in this instance. And then we're leaving that second-story cover that you'll see here in a minute to cover over that parking. So that covered parking provides the back-of-house function that they're looking for. The admin and the studio spaces there, we get to continue to focus on improving the mezzanine that's there as well. So the light yellow is all the expansion, the dark yellow is where we're improving existing functions. And in this instance, we're able, at twenty thousand square feet today, we're able to get to that thirty-seven thousand square feet that would be desired by the, the Playhouse itself and the community. Sectionally, the way this looks, just to demonstrate how the parking might look underneath that, you could see the few spaces we were able to need, just tucking right up underneath that building that's there today. I think that brings us to the conclusion of all the facilities, let me double-check my all right. We have time for questions. Oh, I'm gonna start, you haven't had a question yet, I'll start with you.
Jay Kramer with the Laguna Beach Arts Alliance Group, thank you very much for the presentation and meeting with us. Is there an alternative for the Forum Theater as is to be upgraded to ADA compliance? And did you evaluate those options? And second part of the question, if moving to that proposed other, you know, plan, are we looking at similar square footage, similar attributes, or enhanced?
Great questions. Let's go back to, when we're looking at this option here, this is maintaining the Forum Theater as it exists and the purple are about providing accessible paths of travel to the building. And some rehabilitation of the building would have to happen as well. On the second option, yes, we're always either giving you equal to or more square footage than you have today.
Thank you. There are two elevations in the Forum Theater, the audience level and the stage level. The operator of Terra Restaurant was to provide an elevator that actually goes from was to provide an elevator that actually goes from the ground floor in the restaurant to the elevated floor above that, which is absolutely the, the same level as the backstage and stage of the Forum Theater. So, we basically have that access right now if it were improved. Uh, we need a lift situation to get us into the seating area. And with that, we can make use of the Forum Theater, which as far as we know is in fairly good condition, other than also needing restrooms.
Purple area and working with the Forum that's there, yeah, you can make all that happen, great.
Thank you for, uh, the library. My understanding is it's one of the red critical buildings, like a higher priority for the, for reconstruction. I think it's, if you can speak to, like, what is the timing, what is the criticality? My understanding, there's like three million allocated from the Orange County Public Library system to do basi- basically kind of the utility work maybe was, was the criticality of it. Can you talk through, like, the feasibility of maybe doing these, like, Band-Aids short term? And as a citizen, like, step me through, like, how do we do? Like, how do we build, like, a world-class library in Laguna Beach? What's that, what'd that look like?
I think the reason, one of the primary reasons that it was put as such a critical structure was because of those funds you were talking about. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's about four million and change?
It's about four, I think four point two million.
There is a deadline by which that has to be spent, is my understanding as well.
Well, not spent, but we do have an agreement with the, agreement with the county when they gave us the money that said we needed to have a plan in place by, I think, August of this year. At least some plan to spend that four point two million. So not spent dollars, but at least a plan of what you're gonna do with that dollar.
So, at four million dollars, uh, we design and build a lot of world-class libraries. I can tell you for four million dollars, we're looking at carpet, paint, fixing some things that are problematic. And that's the kind of budget, uh, if we have. Square footage is today can range as, uh, you know, I, they've gone, there was many years ago, I could tell you something could be built for two and five hundred dollars a square foot, and people would tell me, five hundred dollars a square foot is crazy. Um, I think we have to be thinking about numbers that are six, seven, eight hundred dollars, where it's not uncommon today to see things for a thousand dollars a square foot. Uh, especially when you're talking about essential facilities, those can be fifteen hundred dollars a square foot really easy. So world-class library, we've got to be thinking in the dollar values of six, seven, eight hundred dollars a square foot. Um, I think a first decision needs to be made of where does the city want to focus? Does it want to expand? That's one option. Does it want to beautify? That's another option. Um, beautify, restore, I would put those, uh, in one category, or does it just want to repair? So that's the exercise that we're challenged with here today is helping the city determine which of those three tiers you want to go into. So, talking with your city council members, sharing your opinion. Um, I'm hearing, as I listen to the community and I listen to the council members, that probably that restorative function is where people tend, tend to be leaning. Um, I walked through the library today and it's not overly utilized. Uh, the times I see it, I may not be going at the right arrows. I do hear, having kids in the community, I do hear a lot of people are actually leaving town and going to the Newport Beach Library, um, because it's a better facility, better technology, et cetera. So I think there's an opportunity to bring our kids back into the community by building something like that. I think you could do a really beautiful facility that is restorative. Um, some of the things that have happened to that building in terms of the paint and the doors and the closing off of the clear story that just took away from the original architecture would be a great option. I think that's something that's closer in the tune of, you know, eight and ten million dollars. We're doing something similar in Buena Park that's restorative like that, and it's there. So we have to make a commitment as a community that we want to spend more than the dollars that are readily available, first and foremost. And then once we've made that decision, um, I think there's a workshop that you really need to go through that talks about, um, you know, what really needs to happen in there? Do we really need fifteen thousand square feet? Can we live with that? And you have to build more consensus with the community, you have to build consensus with the people that are building it. We usually do that in a pretty open, transparent way involving the community on what they need. Um, and then it's just putting pencil to paper and drawing something and getting it through the city, which always is gonna be a challenge. How do you, I guess it's a multifaceted question, there's the, uh, how do you deliver the motivation behind the city? That's a part, okay? Um, I think engaging in this process, making your voice heard, that in the subsequent city council meetings that are gonna follow this, I, I'm having the opportunity to watch the city council members who are participating in this, specifically, uh, Ranagi and Orgel. They're probably your best points of contact, making your opinion heard. Which of those three paths, do you want to go fix it up, restore what's there, or do we want to expand, helping them decide that? Um, I think you have the support, what I see in the community seems to be pretty supportive of the library. Um, so helping the community get behind that is your first step. Um, once you have that, then investing and helping people raise those funds and figuring out where we get that money from. And we've showed some revenue generating options here. Um, we'll have to make some compromises along the way, and then, um, participating in the design and, uh, helping do that is something that I think you would engage the staff with, uh, at the city, making yourself available to them to participate in community groups and, uh, design exercises.
You'd indicated that, um, for the library, you'd indicated that you'd talked to staff and gotten input. I may have missed it and I apologize, but is there restroom calculations? There are small, few restrooms there now. Is there an improvement for the restroom aspect? And I think the second question is, while this is now city property, this is being run by the county. How, what is their influence at this moment on what they think should be happening?
Question, yes, restrooms improving, increasing the size of those, paramount. Depends on which of the options we look at, right? The three, right? And that restorative option, we're kind of beautifying, cleaning up, making it more accessible, probably don't get too many more stalls. Um, the second and third option, I think that's where you can see more, uh, fixtures, yeah, in that. Um, in terms of your question about working with staff, uh, we've met with them twice, uh, so far. And, uh, they like the organization that we're seeing, they like the library program space, uh, that they're seeing there. Um, they like the idea of trying to activating glenary and showing what's going on in the library. Um, they were very sensitive to staff, they feel like their staff is underserved, and when you look at the corridors that they're working in, I would tend to agree with them. So bringing some more space up back to them has been really, uh, important as well. So, we'll continue to work with them. They are, if the city of Laguna Beach is the owner of the building, they are a significant user as the community is, who checks out the books and spends time there. So we have to balance the needs of all those people and engagement along the way.
Again, on the library, uh, let's see, there are thirty-four parking spaces for the library, and yet uh, thirty of them have been taken by the promenade. Uh, doesn't the library already have a conditional use permit for the thirty-four? So is this gonna be dual use, or is the new plan replacing the thirty missing parking spaces?
Um, I don't have the answer to that question. Sorry.
I don't either. Yeah, I don't think the city does either. But this is the plan for the promenade, it's going to take thirty of those spaces.
Yeah, I'd need some clarification on that. I believe the parking counts that I have were on this facility, so I'm not familiar if the city's planning to take some of those for the promenade.
On the library, um, for the teen section, is there, is the, is the, and or do you envision having, like, study tables and things like that, like the Newport Library? Cause a lot of the teen, the high schoolers go to Newport Library for studying? Like, is that the teen section instead of, like, rows of books, or, okay?
Uh, when I say a teen section, I'm coming off of practical experience. Um, we're doing Buena Park Library, we've done Orange, we've done Long Beach. Um, library is a real specialty for us. Um, specifically, it's the market segment I, I would work indirectly. And teen areas are really evolving. Um, they're really less about the books, and they're more about creating a gathering space for the kids. So there's comfortable furniture, summer is going as far as to have PlayStations and video games on the walls. Um, uh, maker spaces adjacent to it, right? It's more about bringing and attracting the teens there, and, uh, helping, giving them a safe place to do their homework. And it's really, is more and less about the books these days and the computers and, um, the, the sense of community. So yeah, I would see a teen area being much less about stacks of books and more about tables and comfortable furniture. All right, have I worn you all out?
Um, if, as it pertains to the playhouse and all of these projects, it definitely drew in some raises of money as to go, and be who raises the most money and learns, you know, support those first. Um, I'm wondering, the playhouse probably is pretty low in that pitching order of what needs to be done. So, we're looking at decades out here, potentially if this ever comes to happen. I can't see the pavilion, wouldn't believe that country might be wanting to playhouse down. Um, and is that the only thing we've borrowed more stuff with on this dinner? I don't know that that would go anywhere. So it depends on, or if, could you do that sort of expensive work?
They have to be closed, I would say, for some long period of time.
Um, I mean, I know that the pavilion has all offices to do things in the playhouse.
Never, of course, yeah.
Ever. So I'm just thinking, that's gotta be pretty far down the road for the, um, for the thing to happen. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure, didn't, I don't know, really.
Yeah.
Just if there's an order of magnitude that needs to be done, like, say, happens first, or can be here and y'all sort of trickle down? So there is not really a guideline, right?
So, as we look at a master plan like this, we, we're thinking twenty-plus years out. So how does this stuff occur over the course of twenty years? You can't, city can't afford to do all this at once. So we have to be strategic. Um, one of the things that we did at the very beginning of this was, let's see if I can get that. We have these little icons, oops, get down to it. Bear with me. Uh, these icons here. Where you see the building, the color red, is, those are the ones that are most in state of disrepair or have some immediate need. In this instance, it was both disrepair and the fact that it has four million dollars available, that has some time constraints to it. The ones in yellow are kind of mid-range, uh, challenges, so yes, you're right, the playhouse and the festival arts sit in that area together. I think the exercise that we're going through is there is no definitive answer yet of when this happens. This is what moments like this are about, for each of us to share with the city council, where do we think the priority is? And then helping the city council understand, how do you actually fund these things? So is housing, while it may be, uh, uncomfortable over there at St. Catherine's, is that a great way to generate millions of dollars to help fund this? Are there people in the community like you that can raise money to help do that? So when you see a situation where, hey, this is critical because, yeah, it's in disrepair and it has available money, um, that could drive that up. So, yes, money does plan this, where do, how do you fund these things as a part of the strategy? Um, I can take you all the way back to the very beginning, and you can get a sense across the entire portfolio of the buildings we were looking at, um, what the kind of critical nature of things are. So again, red are the highest priorities as perceived from just looking at it from dollars and maintenance perspective. Um, yellow, the middle ground, and the things in green probably don't need attention right away.
Okay, we're just a few minutes over, but, uh, I would like to thank everybody who came tonight, and especially those who made it through the, uh, whole event. I'd like to thank Charlie, he did a great job, he went through the whole thing, so I appreciate it. And again, if, of course, uh, if you have any questions, you can always email us at, it's FMP, Facilities Master Plan, FMP@lagunabeachcity.net, and we'll answer questions, we have a website. And we will try to get this up on YouTube, uh, probably by Monday or Tuesday, so just be a little patient for us. And so, you can fast forward to your favorite parts if you want to watch it, uh, but thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it. But thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
I got schooled on my projects.
Oh, yeah.
There was an architect there.
Yeah.
I'm curious to hear about your work.
Yeah.